de su pantalla. Si está conectado con su tableta o teléfono, pulsen más y verá un menú que incluye la opción de interpretación de idiomas. Para escuchar la interpretación, pulse el icono del mundo o interpretación de idiomas. A continuación, elija su canal de idioma. Thank you, we are ready.
And thank you very much. May we have our roll call for the evening, please?
Okay, vamos a comenzar tomando la lista de asistencia.
Kater Thompson?
Here.
DeCarly?
Here.
Now?
Here.
Quint?
Here.
Shribbs?
Here.
McDonald?
Here.
We do have a quorum.
And we hope that Councilmember Barnacle will be out of traffic and into his chair momentarily. And I'd like us all to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance tonight.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In a moment of silence, please. Would like to note that we'll be closing tonight's meeting in honor of Helene Barless, who's recently passed. She was born in 1926 and married into the Barless family of Petaluma in 1948, some 75 years ago. It was part of the poultry industry that Petaluma is famous for. And for more than two decades, she worked at the Sonoma County Child Protective Services, and we appreciate her service there. And as mayor, one of the nice things, I get to give proclamations to residents on their 100th birthday. I've done a number of these, but I regret I'll not be able to see Helena on hers. Thank you. Moving into the agenda tonight, I look up and down the dais to see if there's any interest in changing the agenda as written this evening. And seeing none, we adopted the agenda as written, and that moves us to proclamations for the evening. Our first proclamation, and it's nice to see all the firefighters in the room, it's firefighter prevention week. Whereas the city of Petaluma and Petaluma first responders are committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting our city through prevention and education. And whereas fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and 79% of all fire deaths totaling 2,890 in the United States in 2023 incurred in the home. And whereas lithium-ion battery-powered batteries power many of the devices we rely on every day, including cell phones, laptops, e-bikes, scooters, and power tools, but pose serious fire risk when damaged or improperly charged or disposed of unsafely. And whereas Petaluma residents are encouraged to follow safe battery practices, using approved chargers, charging on non-combustible surfaces, avoiding overcharging, and keeping batteries away from sleeping areas and exits. And whereas the Petaluma Fire Department, in coordination with community partners, is committed to expanding education and outreach around emerging fire risks, including lithium-ion battery safety, to protect our most vulnerable populations. And whereas Petaluma residents can find more information about battery safety, charging guidelines, and safe recycling and disposal locations on the city's website in the Fire Department section of Home Safety. And whereas the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium-Ion Batteries in Your Home, works to educate us about the importance of buying, charging, storing, and recycling batteries safely. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of Petaluma, along with the members of the Petaluma City Council, do hereby proclaim October 5th through 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this community. I urge all the people of Petaluma to learn and follow best practices related to lithium-ion batteries and ensure they are charging and storing safely, to develop and practice a home fire escape plan with all members of the household, and participate in many public safety activities and efforts of the fire and emergency services during Fire Prevention Week 2025. Thank you, Petaluma Fire Department. And with us, to speak a few words on the topic, is our Fire Marshal, Emmy Seegy.
Thank you, Mayor McDonald, City Council, for this proclamation recognizing Fire Prevention Week. And on behalf of the entire Petaluma Fire Department, we want to appreciate your continued support of fire prevention and our education efforts. And we look forward to continuing to work with our community to keep Petaluma safe through awareness, education, and prevention. Thank you.
For our next proclamation tonight, we have three. It's for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I'd like to invite Allison Abbott forward, who is President of the YWCA Sonoma County Board of Directors. And that proclamation reads, whereas the city of Petaluma recognizes that domestic violence affects one in four families in our local community, and that nearly all of us knows someone who's been abused, or the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, and security based on the systematic use of emotional, physical, sexual, psychological, and economic control or abuse. And whereas established in 1976, the YWCA Sonoma County is our community's singular and vital resource for local residents experiencing violence in the place we should all feel the most safe inside our own homes. The YWCA operates Sonoma County's only confidential safe house shelter and Sonoma County's only 24/7 domestic violence crisis hotline. The YWCA's counseling support services offer trauma-informed individual and support group therapy for victims of trauma and domestic violence, including the students at YWCA's therapeutic preschool, serving one of our most vulnerable populations, children aged three to five. And whereas only an informed community effort will end the cycle of violence for local families, members of our community, members of our community are encouraged to participate in YWCA's scheduled events and programs to raise much-needed funding to support their vision. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of the City of Petaluma, along with all the members of the Petaluma City Council, do hereby proclaim October 2025 in Petaluma as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Thank you.
Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council, my name is Allison Abbott, as you just announced. My position is Chair of the YWCA Sonoma County. And on behalf of the Board of Directors, staff, volunteers, and especially the local families served by YWCA Sonoma County, we thank you for honoring October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month. And thank you for explaining what we do and our services to the community and to Sonoma County. I would like to add one thing. This year has been especially difficult in the county of Sonoma. Sadly, this year alone, Sonoma County has experienced six incidents of domestic violence, resulting in the loss of life of 15 individuals. So that brings it home. It's very real. This is in comparison to an average of only one or two circumstances of this kind in previous years. Nationally and locally, domestic violence-related homicide and suicide rates are on the rise. For YWCA Sonoma County, we remain steadfast and committed to our vital and singular role in Sonoma County. You can learn more about us certainly on our website. In closing, please know that YWCA has been supporting local families for nearly five decades, and we will continue to be here in Sonoma County for our families as long as they need us.
Our third proclamation tonight is for Dia de los Muertos Petaluma. And it reads, I'd like to invite Abraham Solar and Gloria McAllister and Ileana Madrigal. They're the organization behind Dia de los Muertos Petaluma. Up while I read the proclamation, which reads, whereas El Dia de los Muertos Petaluma is a memorial celebration from Latin South America, when loved ones who have died are welcomed back as honored guests between October 31st and November 2nd. And whereas El Dia de los Muertos Petaluma is a nonprofit cross-cultural organization that has planned a citywide celebration of El Dia de los Muertos since the year 2000, 25 years. Whereas the celebration of El Dia de los Muertos builds bridges between communities in Petaluma and provides opportunities to remember in community the loved ones who have died. And whereas by honoring those who have gone before us and the arts and cultures of Latin and South America, we honor our shared humanity. And whereas residents of all ages and all cultures and ethnic groups are finding Petaluma's celebration of El Dia de los Muertos to be comforting and engaging. And whereas through the celebration of El Dia de los Muertos Petaluma, the community is united in providing cultural offerings citywide. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Kevin McDonald, Mayor of the City of Petaluma, along with all the members of the Petaluma City Council, do hereby proclaim October 1st to November 2nd, 2025, as El Dia de los Muertos Petaluma 2025. In recognition of the cultural contributions of Latin and South America, the human need to honor our loved ones who have died and the importance of building community to improve the quality of life for all residents of Petaluma. Thank you very much.
Honorable Mayor McDonald and members of the City Council, it's an honor for us to receive this proclamation. El Dia de los Muertos is a community organization that builds bridges between the Latino culture and the rest of the Petaluma culture. We bring up the talents of some of the Latino families to the city, because we live here and we want to share the best of us.
I would like to thank you, Mayor McDonald, and all members of the City Council, our city managers and our city attorney. On behalf of all the coordinators and the wonderful volunteers that make it possible every single year for 25 years, we're so happy and proud of contributing something special, bringing the city to see the truth of what Dia de los Muertos means. So I'm really, really very proud of this, of being part of El Dia de los Muertos for 25 years. And we absolutely feel very grateful for this proclamation. Thank you all.
Buenas tardes, muchas gracias por esta proclamación. I want to thank you, each one of you. This proclamation means a lot because it's 25 years. Even these leaders, community leaders, they deserve all the recognitions every day. So thank you for recognizing this amazing celebration of our Mexican and Latino American.
And yes, I believe we all will be joining you for the procession from St. Vincent's on November 1st, is it Saturday, November 1st?
Yes.
To the museum where there'll be more festivities.
Yes.
It'll be a good night that night.
It's a month-long event. Events are all month.
And there are events all month. Thank you.
It's a month-long, it's a state, it's a house.
And we also have tonight a presentation. I'd like to invite Sloan Pagal from the Zero Waste Sonoma to the podium to tell us a little about Zero Waste.
Good evening. My name is Sloan Pagal. I'm with Zero Waste Sonoma here representing the agency. Thank you so much for having us tonight, Mayor and Council. I'm here to talk a little bit about the agency, and I'm going to try to do this very quick in about 10 minutes. So, next slide. So just to overview here, we are a joint powers authority, and we were established in 1992. We have a governing body made up of 10 member jurisdictions and representatives from each of our cities as well as the county. We focus on household hazardous waste management, organics program, compliance to the state. We have zero waste program implementation, and we do outreach and education to the community. Our vision is for an engaged and informed community with a shared goal of thriving in a sustainable region without waste. And over the next slides, you're going to see kind of how we implement that here in Sonoma County. One thing we're known for is our website, zerowastersonoma.gov. We have a really great search function there, and you can type in any type of material. You might have questions about how to recycle or dispose of properly and get information about locations and where you can take that. Last year, we had over 140,000 website visits, including 6,500 from just Petaluma. You'll also see us out in the community. We do hundreds of events throughout the year, and last year, we had over 30 in Petaluma. Those photos are from Zero Waste Week last year, and I'm excited to tell you a little bit more about that in the coming slides. You might be familiar with our, used to be called the Zero Waste Guide, or used to be called the Recycling Guide, now it's Zero Waste. So we print 25,000 English, 13,000 in Spanish. We distribute those throughout the community to libraries, nonprofits. They're available widely, and you can also request them to be mailed to your home. We have all of this as well in digital form as well on the website. We partner with Saluna Outreach Solutions to do radio programming in Spanish. We do outreach events with them as well. In fact, I was just on the radio with our friend Ugo there promoting Zero Waste Week to the Spanish-speaking population. So you may have heard of our repair fair and fix-it clinic. We are excited to have one coming up in Petaluma, actually on the 26th of October at the Community Center from 1 to 4. These are events where people in the community can bring in anything from lamps to clothing and bicycles and work with a professional repair person to get it fixed. And often, they're paired with a clothing swap. So you'll see that on the 26th as well. This is a great way to keep materials out of landfill and extend the life of these consumer goods, so we no longer have to keep buying new over and over again. Next. Household hazardous waste. So as you heard in the proclamation, lithium batteries are a huge problem, and so we see that a lot throughout California. And one way we are helping with that is by collecting batteries as well as other hazardous waste at our permanent facility out on Mechem Road. We also do weekly collection events every Tuesday, as well as a rover pickup service, and that can be done by appointment on Wednesdays. And as well, we have a reuse program for things like cleaning supplies and personal care products and paint that is free to the public, so they can just stop by the reuse locker at the hazardous waste facility and pick those up. For e-waste, we have public drop-off events at our transfer stations. Those are permanent sites where people can bring their e-waste for free, so stereo equipment, computers, printers, even microwaves are part of that. Makes it easy for people to put that into the right receptacle, I should say, bring it to the right place for proper disposal rather than putting it in an improper receptacle. Last year, we ran a solar panel collection program, and this was the first of its kind, actually, in the state. We were able to host over 13 events and collect over 800 panels. Many of those unfortunately were unusable, but the ones that were able to reuse, we partnered with Habitat for Humanity Restore and Conservation Corps to collect those and then keep those in circulation. So we are excited to be in the planning process for building a new household hazardous waste facility up in Windsor. And we may also include office space there as well, but we're excited to be able to expand our offerings because the northern part of Sonoma County desperately needs the service, and so that's coming in the next few years. You may have heard of SB 1383. This is related to, this is a state law that is mandating organics recycling and food recovery. So we are the agency that's responsible for that in combination with the haulers like Recology and others in Sonoma County, as well as our cities, to report to the state and make sure all of the generators are in compliance with that. So this is just some imagery as well. You can see what food recovery looks like. First, we want to get it to hungry people. Next, we want to get it to hungry animals, and if it can't go there, then it will go into compost. So we are working closely to make sure that Sonoma County, including the city of Petaluma, is in compliance with that. One way we are doing this is by applying for and receiving food recovery grants. So we have received a lot of money in the past year, in two years, to help do this efficiently throughout the county, including buying new refrigerated vans so that we can redistribute this food. Here is just a quick snapshot of the type of food that we are receiving through the program. And as you can see, those are some pretty staggering numbers and the rescues of 329,000 pounds of food. Another program we've launched are compost hubs. So these are permanent sites or semi-permanent sites here in Sonoma County where residents can actually go and pick up free compost. So you know, as you're participating by putting your food waste and your tree trimmings in your green bin, that's obviously becoming compost at one of our facilities located right now outside of Sonoma County. These are opportunities for residents to get back that material and make beautiful gardens and grow food. If you are a large generator or a large producer, or if you need over 20 cubic yards of compost at one time, please sign up for our rebate program. We are excited to offer this to Sonoma County residents as a way, as an incentive to utilize this compost locally. So visit our website if you would like more information about that. And another facility we have in the works with the county is an in-county organics facility. So right now, we are actually sending our organic material outside of Sonoma County. We are excited to bring this back to Sonoma County near the airport on closed landfill space. So we're in the process, working with the county to make that happen soon. Another project is bringing the construction and demolition model ordinance to each city council as well as the county. We went through a model ordinance process a couple of years ago now, and we know that there's a significant amount, between 35 and 40% of landfill waste is actually attributed to construction and demolition waste. A lot of it has a potential to be recycled or reused through deconstruction, and so that is really what this model ordinance would be targeting. Next. And finally, we have Zero Waste Week coming up, October 11th through the 18th. We have over 50 events scheduled during that week, just the 11th through the 18th, but even more than that throughout October in Sonoma, Marin, and Napa Counties. And last year, we had around 2,500 participants. I think that's going to be even more this year. To let you know what's happening in Petaluma, there is a reuse hub grand opening, October 11th, at the Petaluma Outlet Mall, Suite 220. And that's a space that Reuse Alliance will inhabit, and they're the ones that run those repair fairs. So really excited to bring that to life, and that'll be an opportunity for workshops, education events, all around the different types of reuse. There's also opportunities to volunteer cleanups, and there's a Zero Waste Week Storytime, October 15th, at the Petaluma Library, as well as a composting workshop with Daily Axe, also October 15th. So I encourage you to visit the website for more free, open-to-the-public events to engage and learn more about how we can participate in zero waste. And I think that was my last slide. Thank you.
Right. Thank you very much. That's very impressive what's going on in that space and getting us to zero. And does anyone on the council have a question of our guest while we have her here? Councilmember Shribbs?
Thank you for working on the construction waste. I did my ADU, and turns out, most of my waste was not only two tons of cement, a walkway that I removed, but also over a ton of drywall. And there's actually places to put that here in our county and get it recycled properly. So great work on doing that. Just a good reminder that even small construction jobs like that, there's ways to do that. Because we have the hazardous fire department come through, and the Fire Marshal will talk about lithium batteries for the most part, and everyone has little, either Sonicare or some other toothbrush, little electric lithium batteries, and all sorts of little implements all over our houses now. All these little appliances have little batteries in them, mostly lithium-based now. And so we're still working on. And I know we can take the small little round batteries, the standard ones, and we put that on top of our cans and take that away. But now the lithium batteries, like even if my electric bike, I have a 10-pound battery sitting there, and they get old, I got to do something with it. Where we are now, what's your recommendations for our small, little appliances that have lithium in them for batteries?
Yes, so those would be considered household hazardous waste, and so either the facility or one of those Tuesday events would be your best bet for that. There is state legislation happening right now that would hopefully hold some of those manufacturers of all of those embedded battery products a little bit more responsible so that they would be paying toward the end-of-life management to avoid a lot of those like battery fires and problems that are happening when people put them in the garbage bin.
Right. Yeah, because a lot of folks are doing that automatically now because they're small and don't know what to do with it.
Yes.
Now, as you said, they're hazardous waste, so those are currently just going somewhere and being like incinerated, or is there any recycling potential coming up?
Yeah, there are battery recyclers for that, and I think, you know, as time goes on, there's probably going to be more because of the high value of some of those other materials that are within those batteries themselves. But it's an nascent industry right now, so I think it's going to be like new and upcoming.
Okay, but we are working on it.
Yes.
I just want to get that public. Thank you.
Thank you. Great question. Anyone? Thank you very much for your presentation tonight. We appreciate all the work you're doing. And we have a bit of a proclamation here for you to take back for the team.
Oh, yeah, sure. Thank you.
Patrick Carter, the city's representative to Zero Waste.
Thank you so much. Oh, okay. Awesome. Thank you.
And thank you very much tonight. And that brings us to our general public comment period for the evening. And during general public comment, the public's invited to make comments on items of public interest that are within the city council's subject matter jurisdiction that are not listed on the current agenda. Public comments are limited up to three minutes per person, and depending on the number of persons wishing to address the council, time will be allocated in equal shares totaling no more than 20 minutes. If we have more than 20 people wishing to speak, additional comment time will be allowed at the end of, after the last business item. So I'd like to invite the clerk now to read our message for this.
Yes, thank you. At this time, I will start a 30-second clock. So during these 30 seconds, members of the public should bring their speaker cards to my desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation.
I believe we have six speakers tonight, and so that will allow three minutes per speaker tonight. And our first speaker is Kathryn Brawowski, to be followed by Bryant Moynihan.
Yes, my name is Kathryn Brawowski. I live at the Littlewoods Villa Mohn Park. Harmony has been illegal charge and presence at the Littlewoods. Harmony has been illegally charging residents at the Littlewoods state taxes on our wind bill each month. Harmony Community is not with the state. This is illegal fraud. And also too, I found evidence that the California U.S. Attorney General has filed a lawsuit against Harmony Community and Nick Obolte for illegally terrorizing, harassing residents, and other violations statewide at all the home parks. This is also illegal. Thank you. We need to put Harmony Community out of business.
Thank you very much. Bryant Moynihan, to be followed by Jody Johnson.
Good evening, City Council. You know, the 2001 City Council not only had recognized Day of the Dead, but we collectively sang Acapulco, or acapella, one of those two, Fleece Navidad during Christmas time. So you want to consider that a TikTok challenge? Go for it. I was actually hoping to speak to agenda changes and deletions, and I was going to encourage this council to postpone Agenda Item 7. I think it came out at the last minute. A number of interested parties are not able to react as quickly and respond. I think it was, what should I say, inaccurately labeled or titled Resolution Adopting the Downtown Parking Area, Downtown Area Parking Management Plan. It would be more accurately, you know, entitled Resolution to Charge for Downtown Parking. And it's not well-reported in the actual report, but there is, an excerpt says parking management. It broadly refers to any action that can improve parking availability by creating more frequent parking turnover using time limits and/or metered parking. So the downtown associations and others didn't get advanced notice. They weren't able to meet and take public action, and they weren't able to come to you with a legitimate argument against this. I'll be honest with you, you know, you've heard the expression lies, damn lies, and statistics. I think Petaluma is going to tweak it a little bit. It's going to be lies, damn lies, and parking studies. My concern is...
Thank you. I think if you want to speak to the item, I'm going to ask you to speak when the item arises. I understand speaking to the agenda as you were.
I'm asking you to pull it, as a council, from the agenda. And I don't know what the motivation is by the city administration to charge for downtown parking, but I wouldn't...
That's a discussion of the item. I'm going to ask you to stay.
I know that the administration does encourage all you to be team players, and I would like to remind you, you're not on Team City Administration, you're on Team Petaluma, and that's the citizens of Petaluma. They deserve the right to have knowledge of the item that's going on. This simple resolution, when adopted, will not require them, you guys, to come back to adopt a schedule. So I'm really concerned that the public doesn't get a chance to speak if we handle matters rush, rush, like this one is. It was only put on the agenda, what, Friday? It only appeared or released on Wednesday? So it's just, it's not fair. And I encourage you all to pull the agenda item.
Thank you. And I hope we encourage you to stay to the item and hear what council has to say on it. Jody Johnson, to be followed by Tim Portius.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and city staff. We believe, and so do over 2,000 mobile park residents, that our City of Petaluma City Council and all of our city staff have and continue to be courageous in standing up for their senior citizens and their vulnerable residents. The city has been a beacon of hope for all mobile park residents. It comes with a cost, both financially and as well as the verbal attacks you take day in and day out, but you never waver at finding the truth, thoughtfully considering your votes, and continuing to defend, enforce, and strengthen your ordinances. On a hard-fought vote on August 4th, the city once again met the moment for our residents. We wanted to update you for the record that the revisions you did on August 4th to our RSO included defined arbitration, exclusion of certain operating costs, time limits of two hours each side, and one hour of cross-examination, MNOI method to define whether a fair market increase is prudent, defined allowable management fees. It paid off in our seventh arbitration, which took place with Harmony on September 30th for Littlewoods. In starting the arbitration with Littlewoods, who is undergoing appraisals as we speak for the relocation reports, Harmony argued for a motion in limity to not use the urgency retroactive revision of August 4th. The arbitrator denied that motion. Testimony began at 9:25 a.m., and we completed arbitration at 3:30 p.m. Arbitrator clearly stated when Harmony tried to use comparables, Vega, depreciation, and more, that those methods were not allowed. Harmony Council also dumped 852 pages on our attorney three days before arbitration and same day as opening briefs were due. This is standard operating procedure for these bad actor park owners. One of the greatest gifts that our new revisions did for arbitrations is limit the cost, which keeps the residents able to defend themselves and not submit. Notably, residents have reached out to donors and residents to fund these attacks on them, and you, the city, have had to defend your ordinances by these park owners. We can't be defined as mobile park resident owners. We can be defined, that we're defending our right to live in a home we purchase and maintain to live within our means as we simply rent the land. We supply the affordable house. We buy the house. We're proud of this city council. We're proud of the city staff. We're proud Petalumans. You didn't ask for the fight. We didn't ask for the fight. We're just trying to defend ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you. Tim Portius, to be followed by Janice Barker.
Hello, folks. While Youngstown Mobile Park residents learned that they are replacing a manager with the extortionist that tried to lure senior citizens into giving up their rights last year and who violated purchasing a mobile home in Youngstown as an all-age against your senior park overlay, residents, while dumbfounded, will make every effort to negate this new community manager. Could the discovery need for the future Fannie Mae lawsuit against the Youngstown park owners be safe? Is our private information, financial and everything, safe? Of course not. Another manipulated stack attack on senior citizens. Meanwhile, Littlewoods residents had their appraisals and surveys done at the same time as an arbitration to increase their rent while they are attempting to close the park at the same moment. What kind of heartless behavior is this? This is like sadistic. These people have nothing in here. And I will say, anybody that says anything about my current, or the current, city council, they can just take a quiet time somewhere else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Janice Barker, to be followed by John Hanania.
Hello, hello. This recall petition is simply a waste of taxpayer money. No ethical or fiduciary violations, just disgruntled, non-District One residents not liking a vote or a personality. One year left, on a four-year term, a recall election could not even happen until next year. A regular District One election is next year. Does this make sense for our District One community or any community that will be, that will be next in this type of campaign? Will the new precedent in Petaluma ignore election results? Ignore District One residents? Remove any elected official that doesn't vote your way or that you simply do not like? This would be different if there had been ethical or legal violations, but those do not exist. It has already been signaled who is next on this type of campaign. Civility must be maintained when our democracy is not recognizable. The intent of this recall matters. It's a waste of time. It's a waste of taxpayer money. We all vote next year. The will of the people from the voting booth still exists for a reason. No recall election next year. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker tonight, John Hanania.
How's my smile? Is it good? Because somebody, somebody made a comment about my smile for the last meeting. Let me start by giving compliment to you, Kevin. There's some things being said in the United States, I think, well over 200 years. The captain does not abandon sinking ship. And you still stand in, you not abandoned the ship. So I want to give you a compliment, but the ship is sinking. The second, I'd like to compliment Vice Mayor, because I noticed out of everybody in here, she's the only one other than me wearing pink. And a special occasion, Pink Pin. Last week was the American flag for signing the petition, which is, I have to let you know, it's going really, really well, and I think I'm going to be way ahead of time. But the thing I don't understand is all the scary tactic that's been going on. You see the clerk right here? I do believe she's the one who talked to Wendy at the register of voter to how much it will cost. And I haven't announced it publicly, but I did mention it next door for the loud mouths, that their scary tactic, oh, half a million dollars, $600,000, $300,000. It costs as little as $22,274. Then the person who spoke before me talked about it's going to be next year. Well, maybe since you guys are going to do a resolution, I'm going to give you something to think about when you bring it back on the 20th. Have all your ducks in a row. Tell the community, since once the petition papers turned in, or the city attorney can do that, how much time you have before you have to put it on the ballot. It doesn't wait till the end of the year, okay? Now we get some few clarification. I went to the Black Community event, and I was, who gets in my face? Jerry Thompson. You talking about my wife? You talking about my wife? Are you working for Alex?
I'm of order. I'm of order, decorum.
Oh, it's just my voice. There's nothing violation to decorum, is there?
I'm asking that you'd be sensitive to what your voice can do.
Oh, okay, no problem. Okay. So right away, you're working for Alex. You're working for Alex. So let's make it clear. Alex does not hear anything from me about this. Karen now, and I can show you the text. Flat out said, I do not want to talk to you about the petition. And I have it. The only person I talked to, Mr. Shribs, by the way, you should have been wearing the shirt that you wore last, last meeting. I have told him long before April, people are very unhappy. They want four people gone, and he was the fifth one on the borderline. Barnicle, Kater Thompson, Kevin, Quint. And please confirm that. Thank you very much. We'll see you on the 20th. I look forward to it.
Thank you. And that closes the general public comment for the evening. And that brings us over to council comments. And I'd like to start tonight with councilmember Shribs.
Okay, I have a little bit longer report tonight. Last couple of times, I didn't report hardly anything, but there's lots of stuff going on these last two weeks. First off, I want to make everyone aware that there was a letter in both the Argus Courier and in the Press Democrat this last week from our prior three mayors, Tories Barrett, David Glass, and Pamela Torleot. So I'd like everyone at least to go ahead and be aware of that in. Their basic policy that they read, I'll just read an excerpt from it, because Janice Kater Thompson has served not here, just with us, but in several prior as a council member, and served, I think, under all three mayors. And so they're, they were advocating and saying that Janice Kater Thompson has worked tirelessly to represent her district and advocate for thoughtful policies that benefit the entire community. We strongly support her continued service and leadership. So I just thought I'd just put that out there and let everyone know that that was a public statement in the press by them. Then, as far as my personal efforts this last few weeks, just to bring you up to date on certain last actions here. At the Ag and Open Space, we toured a ranch over at the Laguna, where the Ag and Open Space has provided money for, to keep that going in perpetuity, supporting their efforts to be sustainable ag. So there was a really nice tour up there. That was my second tour that I've done with their properties, and that's going to be coming up here in a couple, in a year or two for, for a vote on keeping that, that organization going with, with tax monies. Also visited the North Bay Watershed Re, or Water Reuse Association. And in that one, they talked about sea level rise, and all the counties are working together a lot with the cities, but there's going to be regional reports out eventually on how to handle sea level rise. And that, there's a regional report required in 10 years, but all the counties and cities are working on it now as best they can. And then Petaluma, as one of our agenda items, I think Agenda Item Number Three is about our use of recycled water, which was, which was, through this organization, we were able to get some grants from the state. And so one project's already been done, Adobe Road Project is now done, and working on project number two coming up. So we're going to get our recycled water not going to the river, but actually onto cropland and, and parks. Okay, then Sonoma County Tourism had their annual meeting, and one of the interesting facts that they relayed is that that in the county is a $2.4 billion business for Sonoma County, which over-ranks our ag business by 2X or more, because that's less than $1 billion of ag business in the county. So tourism is our, actually, a number-one business of income, and that we are trying to support that. And so there's a new marketing program based on what we can provide, because there's 11 other California coastal towns, counties that offer similar, but we are unique. And they said, let's find our uniqueness and look at our character and our culture and sell that. I attended the webinar and the film on ag and climate action. One was, actually, two. One was on land use and that the policies of land use, particularly around agriculture, is critical for sequestering carbon. And the other one was also not only talked about ag, but also ocean fertilization and using natural ways of sequestering carbon, and also with our forests. So forest, ag, and ocean, the three ways we need to work on carbon sequestration as a major effort, and not enough efforts being put into those things right now. So we have to work on a federal and global basis. I did work on a, because e-bike safety was, been an issue, so I went ahead and produced two little videos on e-bike safety and a paper, 18-page paper, actually, for e-bike safety and recommendations, which I used lots of resources to put together. And I just delivered that to the city to kind of look at for some recommendations and ideas for maybe a future agenda item. Also, it's going to go to the county. I'll also be going to the Micro Mobility Conference in, I think it's coming up, December, January area. That's down in San Francisco, to find out more about e-bike safety issues around the nation. I did go to the Ellis Creek Water Resecing Facility. We have an owl box with a camera. I fixed the camera, and I have an owl in the box. Actually, can be seen on your phone now, so that's another little fix-it there. And I'm also attending the Police Academy and getting, learning a lot about their operations, their practices, and their policies. And that's actually a 10-week course. And so it's going to be, I get to have also a ride in a vehicle for a little while to learn exactly what they do on a daily basis. So that's pretty exciting so far. Lots of really good information is being shared, too. There's 19 of us in the class. I did also go to the Marin ADU Fair. ADU stands for accessory dwelling unit. There was over 100 people interested in, that attended, are looking at making ADUs somewhere in Marin County. All the cities from Marin County participated, all are supporting ADUs. And lots of manufacturers and contractors were there I talked to, lots of ideas, we can do more up here. So, but it turns out, one interesting fact is, they're mostly for generational housing, either for sons and daughters or parents to go in the ADU, or to go into the ADU themselves and rent out it. But it's mostly a generational, 90% level is what I've heard. But it's a way to remove, those folks actually don't, are not in the housing market, they're outside, they actually have housing and so are not competing. So actually, it saves us some housing. Let's see, there was another, there was a Friends of the Pendleton River did have a celebration, their 20-year celebration. I'm proud of that organization, what they've done. I'm proud of that organization, what they've done. I'm also proud that I was one of the founding board members and founders of that organization 20 years ago. And just as a reminder, there is a Senior Resource Fair going on at the Petaluma Community Center this Saturday, 8:30 to 3:30. Okay. Hopefully, that was as quick as I can make it.
Thank you, and comprehensive. I think we're all impressed by how much energy and time you're putting into making Petaluma a better place. So, thank you. Councilmember Quint.
Thank you. I was going to say, I was going to also congratulate John, so thank you for, that was very impressive. I don't have any liaison comments to share. I do have a few things that I was able to attend. On the 18th, I attended the grand opening for the Petaluma River Place. On the 24th, I was proudly reappointed to serve on the Petaluma Valley Little League Board as the league safety officer. And I, on that same evening, attended the Better Petaluma Film Festival. On the 1st, I was able to attend a school traffic observation with the staff. And that was brought about based on some concerns that community members shared. And so I just want to thank the staff for making it, making that possible and getting out to see that traffic. On Friday, I attended the ribbon-cutting celebration for the Highway 101 widening project at Alimpoli Park in Novato. And I was excited to be invited to attend that on bike with the group, including the mayor. So thank you for that. And then yesterday, I had the opportunity to volunteer for Petaluma Panther Football Program, as well as attended the Dia de los Muertos opening celebration. And I'm just really excited about the festivities that'll be coming up over the next few weeks. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember DeCarly.
Good evening, everyone. So at Parks and Rec, there were a few things that we went over. One was, and to remind everybody, Movies in the Park is still going on. That starts at 6:00, movie at 7:30. The city's recently partnered with the American Graffiti Group, and so they've got hot rods down there to kind of continue that theme of movies outdoor in the drive-in. Then Relief gave a presentation about their upcoming fall-winter tree plan schedule, which is going to include several parks, public right-of-ways, and open space in town. And for the Airport Commission, we had a pretty neat presentation by Jump Arrow. They're a local aerospace company in town, and they gave us a presentation because they're hoping to get a hangar out at the airport to continue some of their development on a manned vertical takeoff, which then turns and basically turns into a winged aircraft and flies horizontally. Piece of equipment that actually the fire department would be interested in, because what they do is they respond to, you know, emergency calls in rural areas. And, you know, part of what makes them unique is, an ambulance takes about 20 minutes to get to any given location, whereas they can do it in about eight minutes. So they're expecting to save tens of thousands of lives by doing that. They're getting contracts all over the country. And again, this is a local company that really hopes to grow and stay in Petaluma. So they made a presentation to us. Then the airport manager announced that we got, it was at least a few million dollars for different grants to help with the different taxiways out there. They're in just as bad a shape as some of the roads in town. So for the pilots, that was a big win, because they've been wanting to get that done for a while, so they got their grant money and construction will begin on that. Ag and Open Space, Councilman Shribbs already mentioned, we took a tour at the Denman Ranch. That was really unique and cool. They've been around for well over a century, that family. They do beef out there, vegetables, pumpkins. They want to continue their lifestyle, that way of living and farming. You know, for them, they mentioned it, being in Ag and Open Space and having that protection covenant, it keeps developers away from them, and they don't want to see their land that their generations of farm get built upon. Then over on the river, Saturday morning, over at Steamers Landing, the river folks down there were doing a presentation on, you know, the future of the river and what it is now and what it's meant in the past. And they had multiple stations set up for the community to go around, give their own input and feedback of what they want to see in the future, and, you know, learn new things themselves. Then later that day, the Rip City Riders, which is a motorcycle club, local club, they did their Chili Billy event over at the Pengrove Park, which was formerly at the fairgrounds. And that event is, at the center of it, they raise tens of thousands of dollars every year for the Poly Class Foundation. And so that's a really cool thing if next year anybody can go to. They do a great barbecue with chicken, and they have really great music. They had a high school band this year that was doing a lot of cover songs, and I think they were better than most of the real bands. So that was pretty awesome. And that's my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Barnicle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So at the Planning Commission, we did, had a spar hearing on the fire station, or the, I guess it'd be Fire Station, Police and Fire Station Headquarters? Can't remember, it was such a long name. And then I just want to tip my hat to the folks at Urban Chat for putting on an amazing Petaluma Film Festival. It was inspiring, it was great. I had the, I was blessed to get to judge the Whiskerino Competition this year. Folks, put that on your calendar coming up for next year. It's always a great event. I've been, this was my first year judging, and yeah, it was, we had some really great whiskers. And then I just, I'll say it later too, but I know some people will leave, the comments that Mr. Moynihan made up here were just incorrect. If you actually read the plan, nowhere in the action plan do we call for paid parking. The preamble in the report specifically says that. And we've gotten a number of emails, sort of like laying out and calling out that we're going to move to paid parking and things like that. And it's clear that people aren't reading, quite frankly. And I just encourage us to read the manual before you get outraged. Thanks.
Councilmember Kater Thompson.
Thank you. I was in my SCTA meeting, SCTACA meeting today. And last week was the 101 ribbon-cutting in between Petaluma and Novato. And we're, it was a great event, but we're quite aware of the traffic conditions since the time changes. And so Supervisor Rabbit and myself, and with members of SCTCA, will be writing a letter to Caltrans, talking about this, and along with the letter that Mill Valley had sent in, and Caltrans kind of blew them off. So we're going to be working with them, because it's going to, this is like a four-month test period, but it seems like they may need to look at some changes before then. So I just want people to know that we are quite aware of the changes in the conditions and people that, I mean, their commutes are going up about an hour to an hour and a half.
That's the carpool HOE?
That's, yes. Yeah. And so they'll be looking at that in between the two counties. And then I had a SMART meeting, and the line to Hillsburg is, you know, next in line moving forward, that train, and the pathway will happen also. This last Saturday, the Northern SMART Station Trail to Pengrove was dedicated. Mayor McDonald was there, and that was great. And after the ceremony, a large group of people of all ages rode to Pengrove and back. Mayor McDonald, myself, and Cindy Thomas attended the Rip City Rider Event, which was right in Pengrove, so that was great. And we had a good time. Let's see, and I met with a few residents in the Peyran area, actually on Peyran Street and on Madison Street. And it's basically about, what we're all talking about through the entire city is people speeding and trying to figure out what to do. So I've been talking to people in that area, and I was also at McKinley School, maybe three weeks ago, at 7:45 a.m. to see, you know, the crossings there and the traffic congestion that happens. And I have to say, there are some parents that need to have some, learn the rules and not be cutting in areas they shouldn't be. And so there's going to be improvements in these areas, which is great. And I know that the police department and everybody else is working on how we're going to go ahead and reduce traffic. This afternoon, I got a call from somebody that lives on the corner of Maria and Rainier, and I was not sure what Mr. Martin was going to say, but he is really happy about the improvements that are going to happen on Rainier, because he is sick and tired of the speeding on Maria Drive and on Rainier. And his, literally, his house is right on the corner in the back, their back bedrooms are. And so he's really looking forward to that project, so people actually slow down and it's safer. And the other thing I just want to mention about that project, there's going to be three new lit crossings. So there's one at Rushmore now, but now there's going to be one, two actually, at Maria, I think. At least one at Maria, and then on Prince Albert Street. And what's the street closer to? I can't think of the street, it starts with an A. But that's going to have also a lit crossing. This is a 64-foot wide road. The entire east side was built like it was a highway system, and now we're trying to really shrink it down, so we're not having as much speeding. McDowell is a huge problem, and I know people that live in the mobile home parks have really complained about the noise and, noise and getting in and out of the mobile home parks. It's safer now than it was, because they put that light there, which is great. But we still have to, you know, with all the development that continues to happen, we need to really look at safety for people getting in and out on McDowell, because there's a lot of pocket driveways that people don't realize. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor now.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a Public Safety Advisory Committee meeting summary from September 24th. The committee received a presentation from the Petaluma Police Traffic Officers on city traffic trends and enforcement. The key updates, DUI enforcement. Officers reported a decrease in DUI incidents over the past year. Traffic fatalities, there were three vehicle-related fatalities during this period, which is very sad. E-bike enforcement, enforcement efforts continue to increase due to the growing concerns around e-bike safety. Distracted Driver Program, the department is actively educating and conducting outreach on distracted driving as part of its safety initiatives. The recent Traffic Operations, Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Operations, there was 41 traffic stops, 26 citations issued. The Primary Collision Factor Operation with 67 traffic stops and 29 citations issued, including 23 for speeding. The seasonal safety reminders, as we fall back into the shorter days and earlier sunset, visibility on our roads decreases. Drivers, please, slow down, stay alert, watch for pedestrians. And pedestrians, wear bright reflective clothing, use crosswalks, make eye contact with drivers before crossing or entering a crosswalk. Let's work together to keep Petaluma streets safe for everyone. An important parking reminder, please avoid parking within 20 feet of a crosswalk. You might get a Petaluma love note on your windshield. I got one. Petaluma Police Parking Enforcement is now citing vehicles in violation of this new state law known as daylighting. Why it matters? This law improves visibility at intersections, making it safer for pedestrians to cross the street. No, I didn't take up all 20 feet. I only parked to like, maybe five feet into it, because I, as you hear, our council members go to a lot of events, and I was like, oh, I'm going to just take this, I'm only going to be half an hour. Well, you get a ticket. Independent Police Audit Report, no issues or course of action needed after review. Thank you to the Petaluma Police Chief and all his staff for continuing to keep our city safe. And please notice that on our Petaluma Police Department badges or patches this month of October are pink for breast cancer. And just a quick reminder that the 7th Annual Garrett Piaz Scholarship Fundraiser Dinner at Torches this Saturday evening, this is a memory of one of the firefighters who lost his life due to the 2017 fire. Every year, the scholarship money raised is given to a local up-and-coming firefighter, and we usually try to find a candidate who is financially stressed and needs our help. So, thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to get you going with me on the bike somewhere, and we'll save you the next parking ticket. That's really great, though. Thank you for your report. So, most of the items I've been involved with have been touched on, but I want to say that the River Place opening, that was 50 units of affordable housing, and 30 of them are 60% of average income and less, and 20 of the units are 30% of the average income unless, that's the test for whether you can be in one of these facilities. And that 50 units is nearly a third of all houses built in Petaluma, and even just that one project. But I do spend practically every week on a meeting of elected officials and others on the homelessness issue. And I have distributed across our council, the, thank you very much, the executive summary for the county here over the last year, and they're making great progress. And 20% reduction year over year, which is good. I worry the new year won't be as good as the old year, but certainly, a certain amount of credit goes to the collaboration that the city of Petaluma has put together. Our efforts are kind of the model around the county for how solving homelessness works. And that team includes the rebuilding team, who has assimilated downtown streets team, and the COTS team, and the PPSC team, and city staff that all meet every week to try and make a dent in this terrible crisis. And I was able to stop off at the Friends of the River, North River Vision Ceremony on Saturday morning before running off to do the ribbon-cutting up at the Corona Station and the Bike Path and the Motorcycle Club as well. And then I was put up to a challenge of elected officials for week without driving. And while I didn't get the week without driving, I did encourage friends to drive down to, bicycle down to Alimpoli with us. Also was at the Sonoma Clean Energy Center in downtown Santa Rosa, which I could take the train to. And the train is just an amazing asset in our community. Over a million people riding the train, and over a million people on the paths that the train provides. I mean, you know, when Councilmember Kater Thompson made her comments at the Corona Station, you know, they provided certain talking points, and she read, a million people on the paths? That can't be right. And all the SMART staff turns it, that's right, a million people on the paths. And I also had a chance to speak at the Dia de los Muertos opening yesterday, and I hope you all visit the Petaluma Museum, where it's already open with displays of altars for Dia de los Muertos. And that is the bulk of the activity for me this past week. And now I'd like to pass it over to our city manager for her report.
Thank you, Mayor, council, and community. This Wednesday is Walk and Roll School Day, and our PPD will be assisting our local schools as their students walk, roll, and bike to school. Through our Safe Routes to Schools work, we have been doing some significant safety improvements to make biking and walking to school something that's safer to do every day. Drivers are reminded, thank you very much, Vice Mayor now, drivers are reminded to slow down, come to complete stops at stop signs, and watch for pedestrians and bicyclists. Officers will be conducting traffic enforcement around schools to help ensure everyone arrives safely. This Saturday, we have two great events happening. Councilmember Shribbs mentioned our Senior Resources Symposium, that's at our community center this Saturday. Both of these events are free, by the way, and this event is sponsored by our Senior Advisory Committee. And then Petaluma Pride at the Fairgrounds, Saturday from 12 to 5, a free all-ages festival of live music and performances, food trucks, drinks, activities for kids and adults, and a community fair featuring local artists, businesses, and resources. Also, upcoming engagement opportunities around our landscape assessment districts. We will be holding a webinar for the Shelter Hills District, which is in Council District Number Four, on October 8th, from 5:30 to 6:30. Another webinar for the Anna's Meadows District, that's in Council Districts Three and Four, will follow on October 9th, from 5:30 to 6:30. And these will also be on our website and video, if you happen to miss that. In addition, next week, we'll host webinars for the Fairway Meadows District on Tuesday, October 14th, and the Liberty Farms District on Wednesday, October 15th. Both are 5:30 to 6:30 as part of our phased engagement process. All webinars are recorded, and the recordings, along with the supporting materials, will be posted on our newly created district-specific pages on the city's LAD webpages. So go to our website at citypalluma.org/LAD. So go to our website at citypetaluma.org/LADs. And just encourage those that have landscape assessment districts to get involved. We will be doing outreach for all of the landscape assessment districts. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I think we would be remiss to leave this period of the meeting without a note about the dramatic changes at Bounty. They have lost their funding. Bounty Farms, and I'm sure it's near and dear in everyone's hearts here in town, a great program. They've lost their funding stream. And so if you have the ability to help them or if you value their services, it would be great to be in touch with the Bounty team. So that brings us to tonight, to the consent calendar. And usually, at the beginning of the consent calendar, I invite any council member who wants to remove an item from the calendar for separate discussion or separate voting, that this is the moment the council member can do that. However, it would be my opportunity to do that at this time. On the item two, it has an item there that I've requested be placed on the tentative agenda for the city council. And so in tonight's discussion, as always, when an item is removed, we'll discuss everything together, do public comment altogether. And then the voting will be separated. And the reason that I'm separating out the one item that I've suggested be on the tentative agenda is because I believe we'll be having a recusal from one of our council members on that item. And with recusals on consent calendar, where we're not actually going into discussion on things, the council member doesn't leave the chamber. We do the vote, but they just abstain from in that voting process. So let me extend that same beginning to the rest of the council. Is there any item on the consent calendar that any other council member would like to pull out separately? Okay. So then, let me go directly to public comment and then bring it back to council question and comment. And so I'd like to open the consent calendar as an item for public comment. And I ask the clerk if you please read the public comment on this.
Members of the public should please bring their speaker cards to the clerk's desk if they have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation. I did not receive any cards ahead of time, but I think we have.
Thank you very much. We have one public speaker for the consent calendar tonight. And that is John Hanania.
This is in reference to item two that you have requested for the resolution. But before I continue, can you please tell me, do you have a mirror for decibel? Because somebody up there abusing his power, this is the second time he interrupted me for the call. So I'd like to know, do you have a decibel? Because there is decibel for sound, for stereo. There's a decibel for music. So what's the decibel here without being interrupted? So on item number two, I'd like you to, I know this is recorded, but I want you to take notes. I want to make sure, when you bring it back on the 20th, that you have the time exactly to when the petition is turned in, to how long it takes for you to put it on the ballot. I want you to make sure that you have exact cost. Because as I stated under general public comment, some people using nothing but scary tactic. And those people should be ashamed of themselves and including some of you up there. Okay? So the time, whenever the petition is turned in, to how long it takes for you according to Secretary of State? I'm very well aware of it. So does your city clerk. So does your city attorney. But what's being put out there to the public is nothing but scary tactics. And how does it make you feel when some of you up there using the scary tactic and you're not being transparent? How does that make you feel? How do you think the public look at you? When the information is all up there? The information is online. The information can contact Caitlin. The information, they can contact the registered voter, which is, I do believe Caitlin spoke with Wendy, who get the number. But so please, when you come back on the 20th, I don't want to get up here or anybody to get up here and ask questions, say, "Oh, well, we don't have that. Oh, well, we have to get the numbers." So have all the numbers so the community can be very well informed of what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And that closes public comment for the evening. And that brings it up to the council. Is there any council comment on any of the items? Councilmember Barnicle?
I have no comment, but I'll gladly move approval of items one through four on the consent calendar.
Well, it's one through four less the tentative agenda element that is the added element.
Okay, one, three, and four.
Okay. And we have a motion by Barnicle, a second by Vice Mayor Now. And I'd like to ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Barnicle?
Hi.
Cater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribz?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Now we have for item two, also looking for a motion?
I'll move approval of item two.
Thank you.
I'll second.
So we have a motion by Barnicle and a second by Quint and a comment by our attorney.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. I don't think we've stated the recusal. Do you kind of refer to it unless I missed it?
So I'd like to invite Councilmember Cater Thompson to state cause for the recusal.
I'm recusing myself of abundance of caution because there is an agenda item that my name is on.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we have a motion and a second. I'd like a roll call vote.
Barnicle?
Hi.
Cater Thompson is recused. DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribz?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. That moves us to public hearings and matters for consideration. Item five, it's an introduction of an ordinance amending the Petaluma Municipal Code by adding Chapter 4.41 to Title IV, Revenue and Finances, to establish the city of Petaluma Sales Tax Bond Law. And to help us with that, we have our Assistant City Manager, Brian Cochran.
Okay, thank you, Mayor, and good evening, City Council. The item before you tonight is the proposed introduction of an ordinance establishing procedures to issue bonds to fund eligible projects from the new Sonoma County Measure H sales tax measure that was approved by voters on March 5th, 2024. Measure H established a new half-cent countywide retail transactions and use tax, more commonly known as a sales tax, to fund local fire protection services, emergency paramedic services, and disaster response throughout Sonoma County. It was developed and sponsored by Sonoma County Fire Chiefs Association and approved by about 62% of voters countywide. The new sales tax was levied beginning on October 1st and has no sunset or expiration date. At the time of the approval, it was estimated to generate about $60 million annually countywide. And those funds are distributed to each of 31 different cities and various fire agencies throughout Sonoma County, including Petaluma, which receives a little over 7% of the overall tax revenue. The agencies then must use the allocation of Measure H revenues only for purposes authorized by the Measure H ordinance. And so the eligible uses include, but are not limited to wildfire protection, excuse me, prevention, preparedness, emergency response, vegetation management, recruitment and retention of local firefighters, updates to essential equipment and facilities. Additionally, there are various reporting requirements such as maintenance of effort requirements, personnel funding requirements, and reports that must be filed each year. Another key provision of the Measure H ordinance is that, subject to certain limitations, cities and fire agencies that receive revenues for Measure H, including Petaluma, may issue bonds that are secured by and payable from the revenues to finance projects that are within the spending plan. The purpose of the ordinance proposed tonight is to establish a procedure whereby the city of Petaluma may authorize and issue bonds that are secured by and payable from our allocation of revenues for purposes that are authorized, again, by the Measure H ordinance. So this allows us to directly issue sales tax revenue bonds. The security of the bonds would be the Measure H revenues themselves. And this is important because we do have other options available to us. There are other issuance structures that may be available that we could use in lieu of this route of issuing bonds, such as, for example, the lease revenue bond structure that we used back in 2021 to issue Measure U-funded road projects. However, the straightforward, straight-up revenue bond measure will typically offer the city the most advantageous interest rates and financing terms, thus the motivation for moving forward with the ordinance tonight. This type of structure is very familiar to the bond market, which would ultimately be the purchasers of the bonds. And it should yield the most competitive underwriting environment to get the lowest possible interest costs for the city. So as the city looks to deliver important projects pursuant to Measure H and as envisioned by the Public Safety Facility Master Plan, as the obvious example being the upcoming Petaluma Public Safety Facility, the proposed ordinance will provide an important tool to maximize available financing options for these types of projects. And so finally, I just wanted to note that the approval of the ordinance tonight is essentially a precursor to any future actions that the city might take relative to Measure H, relative to issuing bonds, or relative to approving specific facilities for construction. It does not obligate the city to issue bonds and it does not approve any projects. With any future actions, such as approving the issuance of bonds, the council retains the flexibility and the ultimate approval authority to set parameters as it sees fit, such as maximum acceptable interest rates, the specific uses of the proceeds, setting bond covenants, reserve levels, and other terms and conditions as appropriate for that specific bond issuance. All of those details would come back to council at a publicly noticed meeting for approval before the bonds could be issued. And that concludes my comments to summarize tonight's item. And I'll turn it back to council. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'd like to bring it up to council to see if we have some questions tonight. Councilmember DeCarly?
I'll kick it off. Thanks, Brian. What is the city's current credit rating?
So the credit rating for the newly, I should say, the newest issuance of bonds, which was the 2021, was a double A rating. Because this is a new credit that is specifically secured by Measure H revenues, this would be a newly rated credit. So we would have to wait and see and go through that rating agency process.
Okay, will it change our credit overall to have a second bond?
It should not because, again, because this is directly secured by the revenues, the only obligation of the city is to receive revenues for Measure H, pass them through to pay the bonds. It's not, in other words, it's not a general obligation of the city's general fund, let's say.
Okay. And then what is the breakdown between Measure H and U money that's going to be used for the facility? How many dollars from each?
We are still working on that. We are thinking it is going to be very close to a 50-50 split between Measure U or general fund and Measure H. But we are still finalizing that, yeah, before we go out for the bond issuances themselves.
And that's a total of 55 million?
Correct.
Okay. Part of why I ask that is if we use, because it's police and fire, and H is supposed to be for fire. If we use too much H money on the project, if it's more police, does that get the city in trouble at all?
Right. So that's why we're trying to be very careful about looking at the square footages. What is a joint use? What's purely for police? What's purely for fire, et cetera? To try to come up with that blended percentage of what can go for either side.
Is there going to be a secondary income stream? If we're not, you know, because the Measure H money is projected, you know, so we don't know exactly what that's going to be. Is there a secondary income stream to supplement that as a backup?
Short answer is no. And again, the obligation on these bonds is to take Measure U money, excuse me, Measure H money received and make bond payments. If for some reason that money went away or something catastrophic happened, then we would no longer have that obligation. However, having said all of that, I think the more important thing is that we will not be leveraging up, say, Measure H 100% of available revenues. I think that would appear to be overly risky potentially for bondholders who are looking to buy these bonds, which is why we are only going to issue a fraction of the total available Measure H revenues to ensure that even with some fluctuations in the economy, there's plenty of revenue available to pay the bonds.
Okay. What percentage of the H money are you projecting is going to be used for that bond?
Again, we're still working out what that will be. It depends on a lot of factors, like interest rates, the final issuance dollar amounts, as well as the maturity, like the time span of the bonds. So all of those factors could have it fluctuate a little bit. I would say it's well less than half of the Measure H revenues because there are other things that we need to fund, such as some new positions to staff the station with Measure H revenues. And that was, those were all anticipated in the original measure that went to the voters.
Okay. So are we, and we're currently using 100% of the H funds that we have, correct? And will we, if we start to use some of that money for the bonds, are we giving up other things or having to pool from other sources to fund those?
We are not having to on the Measure H side because, again, this was specifically anticipated. Revenues began collecting on October 1st, but I believe our first payments from that funding source didn't arrive until like early spring of this year. So we don't even have a full year's worth of revenue yet. The fire department did make some equipment purchases and we did plan to use Measure H revenues for those. But we will have a little bit of lag here, say, before the positions are hired and then before we actually start spending the money. So there's a little bit of accumulation, but that is basically factored into the overall project financing.
Okay. And we are using 100% of it right now?
I don't know that for sure, actually, off the top of my head. Yeah.
Okay. And then what's the expenditure plan or the terms for the bond?
Sorry, could you elaborate on that a bit more?
Like the bond that we're trying to do? What are the terms for it? You know, the duration? Is it steady payments? Do we get it all upfront? Do we take it incrementally? Is there a balloon payment?
Yeah, so that is all still to be determined. We do, we obviously have to model for financial planning purposes, some assumptions. I believe we're looking at 25-year term, you know, lifespan of the bonds. The payments are typically done twice a year, so two annual payments each year. But again, that'll just depend on the structure. What's the demand in the market? What do the interest rates look like?
Okay.
Yeah. But I can say, just because you did reference balloon payment, there would not be some sort of large balloon payment. This would essentially be level debt service, give or take, over the course of the bonds.
Okay. And, yeah, I just, part of my concern is if we were to head into a recession, And, yeah, I just, part of my concern is if, if we were to head into a recession, you know, the, the county has, they've, they've got plans in place to make sure that they've, they've got their safeguards, that, you know, they, they don't overspend, that they keep their reserves. You know, I, I don't, I don't know that we have, it sounds like that's what you're projecting, but I, I don't know that we actually have a plan that, that we follow or not. And so that's why I'm just concerned that we can continue to pay this off and that not get into any sort of a difficult position over time.
Yeah, and again, that's why we will not be issuing bonds that get us close to the absolute max of, of the measure, because we know that we have, and I'm, I'm oversimplifying, but we have two main commitments. It's to fund the firefighters that will be staffing the station and fund the debt service payments. And so we need to make sure that there's plenty of, of flexibility in there to, to make sure that that happens. If there's excess available, obviously, we can then look at other things like future equipment upgrades or purchases or things like that. If not, we need to make sure that we have enough for the bonds, which obviously is a, a critical thing to make sure that we're making those payments every single time.
Okay, thank you.
And just probably a follow-up question on, on that. The city keeps reserve balances on general fund and on other funds as well. Is, is that reserve balance being adjusted by the added firefighter load or what, what happens to our reserve balances? They have to get bigger on this?
Yeah, so as expenditures go up, our reserve target would go up, and then through the budgeting process, we would budget to place additional money into reserves to match that slightly higher level at the 15%. That's correct.
You know, we, we've had some great participation from the public on this item, and, and I just want to drop in one more of the points. So there's a debt coverage ratio that's fundamental to bonds and, and things. Could you touch on what it means to have debt cover ratio and where the idea, the sweet spot is and what our intention is?
So I may want our financial advisor, Stephen Gortler, to chime in on this. He is on Zoom, but generally speaking, debt service coverage just looks at a certain level of available revenues coming into the city versus the overall amount of the debt payments, and you typically want that to be some sort of multiplier, whether it's 1.2 times, 1.5 times, two, you know, 2.0 times, et cetera. And that, I believe, will vary widely depending on the issuance. So for example, a water revenue bond may be a lot different than like this kind of bond that we're going to be issuing. But in terms of the overall market viewpoint on this, Stephen, if you're, if you're on, if you're hearing this discussion, do you want to chime in on that?
Sure, can you guys hear me okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Sure, um, yeah, so as, as Brian mentioned earlier, the, the city's going to need a lot of this Measure H revenue to pay for operating costs, salaries, equipment upgrades and so forth. So I, I think the expectation is that the annual debt service expense on the bonds will be, you know, maybe as much as half or perhaps less than half of the annual revenues that the city receives from Measure H. As it stands right now, the city's going to receive around $4.3 million this year from Measure H. The likelihood is that the debt service expense would be something less than $2 million. So there should be ample coverage, debt service coverage, better than two to one, to both safeguard the bondholders and also to ensure that there's ample cash flow from Measure H to pay for other costs that the city has to bear for fire protection services and the like.
Thank you. I, I think I was also getting to, towards the city's overall debt coverage ratio for all bonds and, and all revenue. Is there, is that reviewed in, in bond sales as a factor?
Uh, sure, so the city has a variety of different kinds of bonds outstanding. You mentioned earlier the 2021 lease revenue bonds that are payable from the general fund appropriations. So that kind of bond doesn't have a debt service coverage ratio. It's really more a matter of how much debt service can the general fund afford to pay every year. It's generally a good guideline that a city the size of Petaluma not pay more than 15 or 20% of its annual general fund revenues in debt service expense, and the city is well within that guideline. It's not so much a debt service coverage ratio as much as a debt burden measure. But then on the wastewater side of the, of the ledger, if you will, the city's wastewater fund does have several different outstanding bond issues. Each one of those is subject to a debt service coverage ratio, and that ratio varies from one and a half to two times. That's a typical ratio for a wastewater fund. The wastewater fund debt has a double A plus rating, which is a very high rating, which implies a very strong creditworthiness, and the debt service coverage of one and a half to two times. It may not sound like a lot, but, but actually it is pretty good, and it does afford the, the city's wastewater fund to get this double A plus rating. So I, I think that speaks to your question a little bit.
Yes, and that's exactly what I was hoping to hear. So council, other, other questions? Councilmember Shribbs?
Thank you, a couple of things to, to think about, or maybe, maybe the chief can answer the question I was about to ask here. We have the Measure H funds, a lot of the impetus was about fighting wildfires in the, which are going to be more of rural, the county areas. And yet this is going to be mostly a city-oriented station that's going to come for the H. So, but you've also implied that you're going to be adding personnel and maybe some equipment. So, so the question would be on, to make sure that Measure H funds are being used for, to help fight the county support for wildfires. Are we expanding our personnel here or equipment here for that purpose? And is that maybe the reason why we were located there at the fairgrounds and have access to the freeway to make, to get, to be able to get to do the wildfire coverage throughout the county and even Marin County? So I'd just like to establish that if we can.
Yes, thank you for that question. I'll try to make it brief. There's a lot of questions in there. When the Sonoma County Fire Chiefs Association basically divvied up the percentage that was going to be allocated throughout the county from this measure, a lot of the considerations went in place at that time. So you'll note that rural areas, some rural areas, it's not proportional to, the funding wasn't proportional to population densities, which is kind of not the usual. There was more funding actually allocated to the least populated areas of our county that were underserved. So a lot of what you're talking about has taken, has already taken place outside of the city of Petaluma to help reinforce firefighting capacity and vegetation management in those more rural areas. So good news is City of Petaluma doesn't have to worry about that. That's happening in those areas through that funding. Additionally, yes, by adding a fourth fire station, we are going to be permanently staffing the ladder truck, which means a total of nine new positions, three per day. And those firefighters are available. We deploy to all parts of the state and out of state right now, so that adds to our capacity. Also, we recently received that Wildland Fire Engine donation from Marin County. There'll have to be, and that deployed for about two months out of the summer that we got reimbursement from the state. And we're doing internal, I just sent, it's still in draft mode, a great memo on our chipper program run through the Fire Prevention Bureau on vegetation management within our community and how we, our successes the last few years and how we look to expand that with Measure H funding. I think I got them all. Let me know if I missed one.
But you're good, but we're coordinating with the counties and everything to expand the total program, all coordinated, and that's, and part of the fire station why it's located, where it's located is access to, to, so we can get places faster around the county.
Absolutely, and our anticipated nine additional firefighters funded through Measure H are part of a countywide plan to add a total of 200 firefighters to the county. We're at about, I think, 120 as of now, but similar to Petaluma, we need to build the facilities or upgrade facilities in order to add to that capacity to house firefighters.
Okay, thank you. Just Measure H fund inaction is, is what you're talking about and, and where it's going. Thank you.
Absolutely, this, what we're talking about and the whole reason for today would not have been on the table without Measure H. And it, a portion of it might have been on the table, but it probably wouldn't have included nearly what, what we're seeing proposed. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? I'd, I'd like to ask a, sort of an open-ended here for, probably for the attorney, but does any of, any of what we're doing shortcut any other rules or, you know, does it reduce our public transparency or, you know, does it supersede state rules?
Thank you for the questions, Mr. Mayor. So what we're doing is nothing new in Petaluma. What this really is, is deploying the city's home rule power as a charter city to be able to enact its own organic bond laws. We already have three of those in Title IV and the finance title of the municipal code. This would add another. That's the advantage that we have as a charter city. We don't need to rely upon state bond laws to issue debt. We may, but we don't need to. And you heard a little bit from the Assistant City Manager and also from Mr. Gortler, but why that's advantageous, basically what it does is stretches our, 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 our capacity for, for higher yields and lower costs for, for financing. So, so that's what this is. It doesn't change the council's oversight and fiduciary obligations or staffs. There are no new delegations to staff or consultants to make decisions about or take action to issue debt. That's still reserved wholly exclusively to the city council, just as it has been in past issuances. So just as much transparency, just as much fiduciary obligations. None of that is short-cutted, but there, there are important advantages that are obtained ultimately to the public in terms of how we're able to enter sound financial transactions to fund our, our projects' capital and staffing. And the other thing I want to mention, it's also been mentioned tonight, is that this is just a mechanism that the city may use, like other mechanisms that's enacted in Title IV. There is no approval that's being given tonight to actually issue bonds. All that has to come before the council, all these details that you've heard about, like things like coverage ratios, maturity, interest rates, lots of stuff. Stephen is, is, is able to talk about the kinds of details that go into the issuance documentation. So that all has yet to come before the council. This is just a mechanism that the council may use. So, thank you.
Thank you, I think there's, another part I don't quite, I would love to have an answer to, which is when we tee up a bond and, and do we actually take possession of the cash before the project starts? It sort of seems like chicken and egg to me is how, how you fund a project, because this obviously isn't a bond for the whole project, so.
Right, so the short answer is yes, we receive the cash, we will deposit it into a fund or into an account prior to the construction beginning. We'll then pay the bills for the construction project out of the project fund, which is its own segregated account to manage the bond cash.
Thank you, I, I certainly am interested in seeing, you know, best possible bond rates, because a little tick can mean a lot on the, to the, to what we have to pay for this and, and, or conversely, how much we get to put into a good firehouse on this. So thank you for that question or that answer. And with that, I'd like to open the public comment period, and I ask the clerk to read our messaging.
Yes, we did receive one comment ahead of time, which is posted online. I haven't received any cards on this item yet, but this is the moment.
Thank you, and is this Nick Harris?
Yeah.
Please feel free to speak, and the clerk will start our clock here in a second.
Thanks, good evening, Mayor and council members. This proposed ordinance, as I understand it, the, the sales tax bond law is being described as a housekeeping measure to simplify future financing. What it actually does is replace the state-mandated fiscal safeguards with a self-contained local system. I understand the city attorney is saying that it really doesn't deviate from the three existing bond laws that we have. So I appreciate that added distinction. But I would like to consider what we are giving up, what the council is being asked to give up and what the public is being asked to give up in terms of procedures, transparency. I think it might highlight what is missing from the existing bond laws, potentially. So just relying on that the existing bond laws don't deviate from what the proposed one is really doesn't make me feel good. Another aspect is that the ordinance declares itself complete, additional, and alternative method for the issuance of sales tax revenue bonds. Those few words have enormous legal weight. They mean that Petaluma may issue bonds without regard to the requirements, restrictions, or limitations of any other law, including the revenue bond law of 1941, which normally gives, which normally governs notice, protest, validation, maturity, and reserve provisions. One, one of the things I would appreciate clarification on is something that Mr. Cochran said, in, in that if the measure is repealed, the city doesn't have the obligation. I believe that that's making some assumptions about the actual terms and covenants of the bond that would be issued, considering that we're discussing a vehicle of how the council does approve issuances. I, I would like further clarification of how the city would not be obligated to those funds if the revenue source is repealed. I think that things like that should be, should have been highlighted and included in the staff report, give greater transparency, and help the public understand what, what, what things we are giving up in order for expediency and efficiency. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, and that closes public comment for the night, and, and I did want to express a certain amount of gratitude to Mr. Harris for the questions. It stimulated a thorough response back from staff on, on some of the items, which has been posted to, to the website as a public and transparent document. And, and then I would like to ask that question, maybe particularly to our, to Mr. Cochran. So could you explain to us if the measure gets, or A, what's the, what's the term on the measure? Is it a finite term or is it a permanent measure? And then if it repeals, who's, what happened, who owes who?
Yeah, thank you for that question. So on the first one, the, the measure is no sunset and no expiration. So theoretically, it goes on in perpetuity unless repealed by voters, so that language is probably in the ballot measure. And that would mean that it would take another vote, another refer, or excuse me, another Citizens Initiative measure to put a new item on, a future ballot to repeal. In terms of the, the repayment, so I'll, I'll give you an answer, and then if Stephen wants to chime in or correct me, please feel free, Stephen. So basically, the way that these bonds would be issued is that it's a limited revenue bond, only pledging the source of money, which would be Measure H revenues. So there's no obligation of the city's general fund, of the water fund, of any other fund to repay. If for some reason revenues stopped coming to the city from Measure H from the county, then the obligation effectively ceases on our part to continue paying the bonds, because we have no revenue to pass through to the bondholders. Is that, is that right, Stephen, or do you want to chime in there?
Sure, yeah, no, that's exactly correct. It's very common in California to the vote, for the voters to authorize the levying of a sales tax for a variety of different kinds of purposes, and then for local government agencies to periodically issue bonds that are payable from and secured by those sales tax revenues. It's well understood in the marketplace among investors that, that voters retain the right in the future to, to change their mind and to go back to the ballot and to rescind their authority to levy and collect that sales tax. And the bonds are structured, understanding that that is a potential risk. It's, it's quite, I can't think of any instances where it's actually happened, where a, a sales tax was passed and then it was used to secure debt, and then subsequently the voters rescinded the authority to levy the tax, and then the bonds went into default. But, but it's understood among investors that that is a theoretical risk that occurred, that could occur, and they weigh that risk when they evaluate whether or not they're interested in buying the bonds. They look at Sonoma County, they look at 60% of the voters approved this, they look at the fact that it's for fire protection services, which is an essential need in a place like Sonoma County, and they make the judgment that it's highly improbable that voters will, will sort of discover that they don't need these funds for these purposes any longer. But nonetheless, as, as Brian said, if that were to happen, you know, for whatever reason, the city would not be obligated to backfill the, the foregone sales tax revenues and to make debt service payments from its own sources. That's a risk that the bondholders have knowingly and willingly accepted when they bought the bonds, and, and the city would be free and clear in, in the extreme event that that were to happen.
Thank you very much, that's, that's what I was looking for in terms of clarity. I'd like to invite Councilmember Shribbs.
Now, just to get a little more practical for comparisons, let's say, there's this method that we're proposing to do this financing, hopefully will save us some money doing it this way. Hopefully, we'll save us some money doing it this way. Let's look at the other way, pretty much the standard way any of us build anything. If we, we're going to be building this in two years. We're going to spend all the money building it and hiring it, putting the pole in. So the money's going to get spent. Just a matter of how are we going to finance it over time? So we can do it this way, using these bonds and this technique, working through that. Or we could just take a loan from a bank or some other method. If we did it just like a regular homeowner, we're going to build a house and we're going to pay for it, take on a mortgage. That other method, that method going through other institutions, this method, how much money are we actually going to save over time using this method compared to some other loan method?
Do you want to chime in there, Stephen? I would guess it's going to be at least 50 basis points difference on the rate, but do you have any other?
Yeah. So well, there's a couple of, I guess, answers. Number one, I'm not sure that the city general fund has the financial strength to borrow $55 million. That's a lot of money. The annual debt service would be several, you know, many millions of dollars a year. It may be beyond the means of the city to borrow that much money from its general fund. If Measure H didn't come along, it would take a miracle or something to, you know, to come up with $55 million, you know, when you need it. So, I mean, Measure H really is the saving grace here that allows you to fund, you know, 50% or thereabouts of the project without having to dip into the general fund. If you were to go to a bank and say, we'd like to borrow, you know, half the cost of the project. And you said to the bank, you can have our Measure H revenues as security for this loan. I'm sure they would say, sure, that's a good idea. Let's do that. You know, we'll give you half the cost of the project. You give us your Measure H revenues and, you know, we both get what we want. The only difference here really is that bonds will have a much lower interest rate than a bank loan will have. The marketplace of investors who buy bonds will offer rates that are significantly better than the banks that make loans to local public agencies. In addition to which, you could issue a bond for 25 years and pay it back gradually over time in relatively small amounts. No bank would ever make a 25-year loan of this nature. They may extend credit to you for 10 years or 12 years or something like that. But the annual cost of debt repayment would probably be double what it would be for a bond issue with a 25-year term. So there's some big advantages to the, to the bond method of financing.
Okay, so trying to get more clarity, just to make it a little simpler for everyone. So that, is there another method, other than this method, to actually acquire the $55 million upfront to pay for this building? Is there some other method? What you're saying is basically the banks aren't going to do it. Is this the one and only, or is there another method? And what's the initial cost?
Sure. I'm sorry. Yeah, so absent this ordinance, it would still be possible for the city to issue bonds payable from its Measure H revenues to pay for the other 50% or thereabouts of the project. Instead of the city of Petaluma issuing sales tax bonds as is envisioned by the ordinance, instead, what you would do is you would have the Petaluma Public Financing Authority, an entity that was created by the city for financing purposes. That entity would issue bonds and that would be payable from, the city would assign to the Public Financing Authority, the city's right to receive Measure H revenues. It would give those revenues over to the Petaluma Public Financing Authority. And then the Petaluma Public Financing Authority would then promise to give those revenues to the bondholders who bought the bonds. This extra few steps of creating the authority and then having a loan between the authority and the city and so forth, it adds complexity to the structure of the bonds, which is not something that bondholders prefer. And so there would be fewer investors who would be interested in buying bonds that were structured by the Petaluma Public Financing Authority and so forth. And so this, this approach of the ordinance, making it simpler, where the city issues the bonds itself under its own name, it will widen the universe of potential investors who might be interested in the bonds. And that's what brings down the interest rate a little bit on the bonds. You know, we estimate maybe $100,000, maybe $200,000 in savings over the life of the bonds from this, you know, the ordinance and the effect that the ordinance has on, on the city's ability to structure the bonds a little bit more efficiently, a little bit more to the liking of investors. It's just a matter of saving some money for the city, really.
Okay, just want to make it clear that this is our best opportunity compared to any other method that we may try to finance this operation. And so that's why we're doing this. And you just said about, even in best case scenario, we're going to get at least a $200,000 savings by doing this method compared to the other method. Plus, the other method is a huge expense in labor, time, staff, and effort, and with maybe less opportunity. So that's what it sounds like. Is that, is that a quick summary of what we're actually saying here? That this is our best and really only way to really make this happen?
This is the best way for the lowest interest cost for the city, yes.
Okay, that makes it very clear for us. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. I think we got down in the weeds a bit, but I think it was important for council and the public to hear all that. And did you want to turn that into a motion?
Let's turn that into a motion. I move, we go to the resolution and pass it.
I'll second that.
And are we a resolution here? Or we, first reading of the ordinance?
Ordinance, okay. I thought it was a resolution to create the ordinance.
Okay.
Well, this is actually, it's, it's, it's a, this is, the action here is introduction, in other words, the first reading of the ordinance to add a new chapter 4.41 to Title IV of the City's municipal code to establish the City of Petaluma Sales Tax Bond Law.
Okay, what if I just move item five?
Yes. And do we have a second? So we have a motion by Shribs and a second by Vice Mayor. Now, may we have a roll call vote?
Barnacle?
Aye.
Cater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. And thank you for the clear explanation. And thank you for our guest online. We move to item six, a public hearing in action to adopt a resolution confirming the cost of abatement of hazardous vegetation and rubbish and confirming approval of the forwarding of unpaid bills to the county assessor's office for collection as assessments. And to help us with this item, we have our fire marshal, Amy C. G.
Siggi.
Siggi.
You're getting better at it every time.
Thank you very much.
Oh, wonderful. So, good evening again. This resolution confirms the cost associated with the 2025 hazardous vegetation and rubbish abatement program carried out in accordance with our Petaluma Municipal Code. Following the April and July city council actions ordering abatement of our identified fire hazards, we have submitted a detailed cost report for council confirmation. The report outlines the expenses incurred for contracted abatement work on 29 public properties out of 702 total abatementless properties, where property owners failed to comply with abatement. Seventeen property owners have reimbursed the city for time and expenses for abating the hazard on their property. But for the 12 that have not, this adoption of the resolution allows the city to recover those costs through special assessments forwarded to the county assessor's office for collection. And I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you so much. I do appreciate a brief and succinct report. And council, any questions? Let's move it over to public comment. Any public comment on the item?
We did not receive any comments ahead of time. But if anyone would like to make a comment, now's the moment to please bring your speaker card to my desk.
And not seeing anybody moving towards the podium or the clerk's desk, then we close public comment on this item. Bring it back to council. For comment or motion?
I'll move approval.
So we have a motion by Barnacle with a second by Cater Thompson. And we would, if we have a roll call vote, please?
Barnacle?
Aye.
Cater Thompson?
Yes.
DeCarly?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Quint?
Yes.
Shribs?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your being here with us tonight. And that moves us to our next item, item seven on our calendar tonight, which is a resolution adopting the downtown area parking management plan. And we have our Bjorn Griepenberg, transportation planner, to help us with this item.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Thank you for the introduction. I'm also joined tonight by two of our consultants on Zoom, Franny Ritchie and Kelly Connolly, as well as other members of our city staff here who can help answer any questions in their wheelhouse as we go through this. So tonight, bringing forward the downtown area parking management plan, which you last saw in January at a council workshop for your consideration of adoption. We'll provide a brief introduction, make sure everyone listening to the presentation tonight has kind of the essential baseline knowledge and background. And then we'll dive into some of the key findings and recommendations included in the draft plan. So in recent years, your city council has identified downtown parking as a top priority. However, with the most recent data collection effort being back in the early 2000s, it was recognized that a parking study would be a critical first step before taking any, any actions. So in 2023, a multidisciplinary team of staff from our public works, community development, economic development, and police departments was formed to begin scoping this plan. And fortunately, we were able to obtain funding, a $100,000 technical assistance grant from the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which hired TY Lin, our consultants, to assist us with this project. And so we kept, kicked it off last year in May of 2024. Our scope of work for the plan aimed to produce a clear understanding of existing on and off-street parking inventory and utilization, as well as other curb uses like various loading zones or other short-term parking designations. We wanted to engage the community to really understand their pain points, wants, and needs when it came to parking and curb management. And we wanted to then, using both the above, identify strategies to optimize parking and curb use in support of a thriving downtown. So we're working towards several desired outcomes through this planning effort. At a very high level, our hope is to strengthen our community and economy by providing a vibrant and safe downtown that is easily accessible and accommodating to residents, visitors, employees, and businesses. In order to do so, we recognize the importance of easing downtown congestion and those pain points I mentioned that we hear about with regard to parking, loading, and deliveries. And we expect this plan to help guide near and long-term investments and also some regulatory changes to help address the issues and opportunities that we flagged throughout this process. The effort, of course, is closely aligned with several guiding principles and goals, not only in our current general plan, but as well as the general plan update and its many policy frameworks. So looking back at how we got to this point, we, I mentioned we kicked this off in May of last year. And the plan was created with a robust data collection effort that involved several parking and turnover counts, visitor and employee surveys, two focus group meetings with downtown business and property stakeholders, presentation to the Chamber of Commerce's Governmental Affairs Committee, and of course, that workshop that we held with you back in January of this year. So to start things off, identification of a study area, it was really challenging for our team to constrain this and narrow in on a study area, but ultimately, we had to in order to move forward with the budget. And so we ultimately landed on a quarter-mile buffer roughly from the, really the core of downtown at Western and the Boulevard. And you can see there, that's highlighted, that quarter-mile buffer is highlighted in orange. And we did make some small additions. You can see here, I'll move my cursor over here. We added on some blocks here to capture the potential for the use of the city hall lots to accommodate spillover parking. We added this area around here to try to capture and understand spillover impacts from the new activity at Crooked Goat and Acme Burger. And then we also expanded up on the, in the North Water Street area, which has seen some increased activity associated with new residential development and of course Brewster's Beer Garden. So looking at the existing regulations downtown, we have a two-hour time limit on most downtown streets and in the Fourth and A Street lot. And those time limits are in effect from 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday. For those looking for slightly longer-term parking options, we have a four-to-10-hour limit, depending on where you park in the Keller Street garage. There's no time limit, to my knowledge, in the Theater Square garage. That's a privately owned and managed garage owned by Basin Street. And over the years, we've seen a lot of different signs installed and curb markings to designate various curb uses such as loading and short-term parking zones. And so we'll be taking steps, or we are taking steps to clean up some of the signage for consistency and legibility. And when it comes to the time limits and compliance with those various signs and markings you find downtown, those are all enforced by our two fabulous parking enforcement officers who issued nearly 3,600 tickets in 2024. So as with any bustling downtown area, we have several needs competing for very limited curb space, including not just parking, but also for commercial deliveries, loading, bus stops, outdoor dining, bike lanes, and fire hydrant or building access for our fire department. And with all of these various uses competing for limited space, we do run into challenges. And it's not uncommon to see things like double parking or people parking in red zones or maybe parking in the wrong, in an area that doesn't quite match the intended use. And so that's something that, you know, we're obviously very aware of going into this planning effort and heard a lot about and witnessed ourselves in the data collection effort. And really, these, these challenges are becoming, they're compounding with the proliferation of online retail, food delivery, and ride-hailing apps like Uber and Lyft. But really, the food, food delivery, I'd say, was highlighted throughout this study as an emerging pain point for, from some of our downtown stakeholders. We've also heard quite a few concerns about the striped median on Petaluma Boulevard, the way it's used as a de facto delivery and loading zone, and some of the challenges that that creates for, especially for emergency response and their ability to get through when vehicles are parked in that median. So moving into the, really the meat of the, of the plan with the parking utilization findings. And just to kind of start things off with a little bit of an overview of some key best practices or key principles to kind of keep in mind here as we start this discussion. So the industry best practices say that optimal parking occupancy is around 85%. And this is a level where you know that you've got a successful, thriving downtown, where obviously, you know, there's a lot of economic activity happening. But you do want to have roughly one space open on every block or three out of every 20 spaces. And that space being available is key to reducing the congestion and frustration that comes from parking, on-street parking being full and people endlessly circling for parking. So that's kind of the golden number that cities use as they're looking at this data. And then when it comes to on-street parking versus off-street parking, there are slightly different, there's some different intent there behind who's using it. So with street parking, generally, you want to accommodate people who are prioritizing convenience. So people who are coming downtown with maybe one or two errands in mind, they want to be able to conduct their business, find a parking space, conduct their business, and leave. So you want those spaces turning over regularly, thereby freeing up those spaces for the next customer. Whereas people visiting for longer periods should, in theory, be a little more willing to, you know, park once, go park in a garage or in a lot or maybe on a, on a street, kind of on the outer edge of the downtown. They're going to be willing to spend more time looking for that parking space, getting to and from their car because they are spending a longer period of time downtown. So with our parking counts, we initially conducted four counts. And then after our first meeting with the downtown business and property stakeholder group, with some of their feedback, we actually added two counts. Those being on the two midweek counts on Wednesday. those being on the two midweek counts on Wednesday and Thursday, to capture some of those peak periods of employment activity downtown. And then we also have three counts on a Friday, looking at the way demand changes throughout the day. Friday from 7:00 to 10:00, 3:00 to 6:00, and 6:00 to 9:00. And the reason for the inclusion of that first, that seven-to-10 count is really to kind of understand that's a period where employment activity is low, visitation is low. So let's see what the kind of the baseline looks like and see how that compares to the midday and evening periods where we know that visitation and employment start to take up. And then we also had one weekend count on a Saturday afternoon. So over these counts, you'll see in this map here, our study area outlined in white there. And then we have a core area that's identified, and this is included in all of the maps, the tables, the core area is broken out. And that was identified, once we had an opportunity to look at all of the data from these six counts, we noticed a handful of block faces where occupancy regularly exceeded 70 or 80%. And so that's the core area that's identified there, shaded in green. So there are six of these maps, one for each count in the plan. I'm just going to share the Saturday afternoon one to kind of, to show you what's in these maps and how to read them. You'll see a colored line on each block face and a colored polygon in the off-street lots and garages that are open to the public. And so when you see dark green, that's low occupancy that was observed at that time on that block face or in that lot. And then as it moves to red, that's where you see higher utilization. So what's interesting in this map, just to kind of zoom in on the Theater Square area, you'll see that all of those on-street parking spaces show as dark red, they're full or nearly full, while the Theater Square Garage, which has 386 public parking spaces, is at a very low occupancy. So showing that opportunity to relieve some of that on-street demand by hopefully pushing, encouraging more people to park in our lots and garages. And similarly, you'll see the Fourth and A Street Lot hovering around 50% here, and the Keller Street Garage, a little bit higher, but somewhere in the 60% to 80% range. And this is on a Saturday afternoon when, you know, downtown's busy. So this table just shows that data summarized by kind of these three groupings. In that first column there, you have overall utilization for the entire study area, for all of the on-street spaces in the study area. And you can see that for all of the counts, between 60 and 70% utilization in the study area streets. When you move over into that second column, those are the downtown core streets that I just described. And so there you'll see the occupancy ticks up to 70 to, in the case of that Saturday afternoon, over 90% occupancy. Those are obviously the busiest, highest-demand blocks. And then looking at the last column there, our public off-street lots with utilization ranging from 38% to 60%, and not always aligned with periods where the on-street parking occupancy was highest. And then this is just another view of that, looking at the Keller Street Garage, the Theater Square Garage, the Fourth and A Street Lot, and then the downtown core on-street spaces, looking at kind of the different levels of occupancy across those different facility types. So we did not inventory or count private parking, with the exception of the Theater Square Garage. But we were able to use aerial imagery to estimate the number of spaces in all of the privately-owned lots that are, you know, considered somewhat sizable, easy to pick up in aerial imagery. And across these lots, we totaled about 1,000 parking spaces. And so this is a tool that can be used, obviously, looking at aerial imagery taken on weekdays or weekends to see what utilization of these lots looks like outside of, well, really through the course of the week. And in particular, we feel that there is significant potential on weekends and evenings for private parking lots to potentially become, you know, a tool in this toolbox to help ease some of that on-street, some of those challenges we see with street parking in peak periods. And the win-win there is that you have a lot of, a lot of these private lots are owned by businesses that maybe operate Monday to Friday during business hours. And so if they were to make their lots available through shared parking arrangements with nearby businesses or making them open to the public in some way, they could then obviously define which days and which hours are workable for them. And in one case, we have a property owner at the former Bank of America site, who's actually, they've opened their lot for paid parking and got really positive feedback from their experience implementing that. We'll obviously touch on that a little later in the presentation when we get to the recommendations. So the next thing we looked at was a turnover or dwell time analysis to understand, for those who are parking on-street, how long are they staying? How effective are our two-hour time limits? And are there some adjustments that might be needed? And we were able to pick, you pick one city block because what they do is they actually set up cameras on either end of the block, and there's a way they can basically monitor vehicles in and out of the block. And so we picked what we thought was, you know, the busiest, kind of the most symbolic core downtown block, which is Kentucky Street between Western Avenue and Washington Street. And so this dwell time analysis was conducted from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, Wednesday to Friday, with two of those dates in October and one in June. And across those three days of data collection, the average parking duration was about an hour. But we also observed several vehicles, obviously, using red curb areas for idling, loading, and deliveries. And then this is looking at the, this is a breakdown of the duration of all of those private vehicles that parked on-street. So this is not including cars that just passed through the block or cars that made a quick delivery. These are cars that actually parked in a space. And we see nearly two-thirds of cars were parked for about an hour or less. And interestingly, just 8% of cars exceeding that two-hour time limit. So the good news here really does look like those two-hour time limits are doing their job at creating turnover on the streets and in the areas where we do want to see turnover for increased business visitation. So then looking at our survey and focus group findings, I mentioned we had two meetings with several downtown business owners and property managers. And so across those two meetings, had some really good discussions. And these findings are primarily from the first meeting where we really wanted to understand kind of their priorities and what they wanted to see out of this and hear about their pain points when it comes to what they see and what they, you know, observe on a daily basis with parking and loading challenges. So what we heard from them, free parking and high turnover rates are great ways to attract customers. But we also heard that there aren't enough loading zones or enough short-term parking spaces. A lot of the businesses we spoke with said that they have a lot of customers who just want to stop, you know, drop off goods or pick up goods quickly and move on. So they felt that that was lacking. On the flip side, we also heard that that two-hour parking restriction is challenging for their employees. And we did also, you know, you always hear when you talk to people about downtown parking, I think there's some a desire to see more long-term parking for those who, obviously, who do want to, for employees and those who want to spend a longer period of time shopping and dining downtown. We heard pretty strong interest in transit for employees. And the recommended improvements that came out of that first focus group meeting, we're using our private, figuring out how to use private lots to increase our downtown capacity, improving security, especially in the off-street garages, and encouraging Lumigo and other transit use for their employees. At our second focus group, we took, we basically took this plan in its draft form, more or less, at least some of the key recommendations after following that council workshop. And felt like we had really strong consensus on the recommendations that you'll hear about in a few minutes. Had a really good conversation, but not really any new findings that came out of that second focus group meeting with them. We also did a visitor survey, which received over 600 responses and ran for a few months at the very end of 2024. And so from our visitors, we heard that most respondents typically use street parking. People find it difficult to find parking downtown. They consider safety concerns to be a challenge when it comes to using the garages. And barriers to traveling downtown are congestion and limited parking availability for about one-third of the folks who responded to the survey. From our employee survey, a lot fewer responses, but we still got 70. Nearly all of these folks said that they drive to work, but over halfs who currently drive said they are interested in using other modes with the leading mode of interest being transit. Looking at where these people are parking, most of them said they can park very close to their workplace and also said that it's, a lot of them said that it is at least very important, or at least somewhat important, for them to park somewhat close to their workplace. And the one, you know, the real finding that came out of this was 40% of these respondents admitting that they park in the two-hour zone and move their car several times during the shift, which obviously is not a great use of those spaces, which we want to really prioritize for customers, not to mention the loss of productivity that comes with people leaving to move their cars several times a day. So summary of our key findings across all of these data collection efforts. There's high, there is very high demand for on-street spaces within the core downtown blocks, really where you would expect it to be and where we all kind of know that demand is. But that demand quickly drops off around the study area periphery. Our garages and lots are underutilized even when nearby street parking is near or at capacity. Our two-hour time limits are effective at creating regular turnover. I just mentioned the employees who are parking in those two-hour spaces, who we'd love to get in longer-term parking spaces, more suitable for their use. And lastly, just acknowledging that we live in a very, you know, a quickly evolving time where delivery, loading, and short-term parking needs are becoming greater with more and more online retail, food delivery, and ride-hailing happening. So moving into our action plan, here we have 17 actions identified across five categories. Our first category is improving transportation options. And this is really key to our efforts to reduce parking demand by investing in and promoting all of the other mobility options other than driving, so that we can make walking, biking, and transit as safe and convenient as possible for people who are willing and able to use those modes. So the recommendations here include creating a webpage that promotes transportation and parking options for downtown visitors and employees, working with employers and developers to promote and incentivize car-free modes among their employees, visitors, residents, et cetera. Linking employees and visitors with regional transit and potentially satellite parking areas outside the downtown with fixed route transit, Lumigo, or even a new downtown shuttle if funding is identified and if we feel that there is a gap that can be filled there that can't be served by existing fixed route transit or something like Lumigo. And then lastly, improving our bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, just acknowledging all of the projects proposed in our recently adopted active transportation plan that would make it easier for people to get down to and from downtown by walking, biking, or rolling. The next item is creating more frequent turnover. And here we're just, again, looking to maximize economic productivity and reducing the congestion that comes from circling by ensuring those really high-demand on-street parking areas are utilized primarily by customers and see frequent turnover. So here we have increasing the availability of short-term parking spaces. So for example, we've got, our municipal code has several different curb uses that we can implement, including 24-minute parking spaces, hour-long parking spaces. And then also, through discussions with our police department, we've identified a need to upgrade some of our parking enforcement equipment that would allow them greater flexibility as they are working downtown, which is really important if they're going to be able to effectively enforce any of these shorter-term parking spaces. And this goes hand-in-hand with our next category, which is to promote long-term parking options. So I've made it clear, we don't want to see, necessarily see employees parking in those two-hour spaces, but we obviously want to have a convenient option for them nearby. And so working to redistribute that demand, reduce the congestion that comes from people circling and moving their cars by promoting and incentivizing use of long-term areas. So this could include lots, garages, or some of those periphery streets. And the recommendations here include a wayfinding signage system that promotes parking availability at the garages. So these are electronic signs that we can place at key gateways around downtown, telling people how many spaces are available in the Keller Street Garage, for example, and helping, you know, encourage visitors to start their search for parking there, especially if they're looking for a longer-term space. Creating an employee permit program and designating areas where permit holders may park, a lot of different options there, whether it's, you know, some combination of the Keller Street Garage, the Fourth and A Street Lot, some of those periphery streets. Hope, you know, looking for things that are convenient. We know how important it is that employees park somewhat close to where they're working, but also finding places that maybe aren't as critical for customers to park in. And then extending time limits from two to four hours on those periphery streets where lower utilization was observed. This really applies primarily to the blocks, including and south of Keller and Fifth Street. That's where you see the demand really drop off. Revising the A Street Lot permits to a first-come, first-served system. So we have, I should have mentioned, we have 16 spaces in our A Street Lot right now that the city issues quarterly permits for, and they are privately reserved by the permit holder. So if you have a permit, you effectively own that space 24/7 for the duration of your permit. So through our data collection effort, we obviously saw that these spaces were pretty underutilized, especially outside of the traditional business days, business hours. And so switching this over to a first-come, first-served system would allow us to issue more permits. So the spaces aren't tied to a specific permit holder. And then also to limit that permit-only parking to business days and hours so that other downtown visitors can utilize those 16 spaces when permit holders generally would not be. And then our last action under this, under this category is to continue to address safety and security in the Keller Street Garage through facility upgrades and enforcement. And there's been a lot, a lot has been done even since we started this study with the Keller Street Garage upgraded lighting, fresh paint, striping. And I know our PD and safe teams have been doing regular patrols. We've been doing regular cleaning. So there's been a lot of focus on making that garage more attractive and more inviting to folks. Forgot to mention, we've also had, all of the, all the security cameras there have also been recently upgraded. Our next item is improving safe accessibility and safety. So we have a need to inventory and upgrade our ADA parking in city lots, garages, and streets. Best practices from the Public Rideaway Accessibility Guidelines, which were released pretty recently, advise cities to pursue a 1 to 25 ratio for ADA spaces to general parking spaces. So we'll be using, we'll be looking to meet and exceed that guide, that guidance on all of our downtown streets. We are working to red curb intersections and crosswalks. Councilmember Now mentioned the daylighting bill, so state law now prohibits parking within 20 feet of intersections. So we have a good start on that downtown. When we kicked off the study, we had somewhere around 50, I think 50 remaining spaces that needed to be eliminated near intersection approaches to achieve full compliance downtown. So that's something we're working on. And then increase the availability of loading spaces on core downtown streets and updating all of our signage and curb markings for greater consistency and legibility. So those are your especially yellow curbs. One of the things that we've we've heard throughout this was that passenger loading is not a does not seem to be a critical need in most places downtown. And we actually have a nice tool here with our yellow curb designation. It's, it allows for passenger loading up to three minutes, and then the loading of goods up to 20 minutes. So that's a a more flexible curb designation that that we recommend in most areas downtown when we're implementing new loading zones. And then lastly, considering day and time restrictions for delivery trucks over a certain size. In an ideal world, you would have the large delivery trucks coming in the early hours of the morning when our streets aren't as congested and when there's not as much parking demand. We realize that's not always possible, but that's something that we we certainly hope to strive for in partnership with our downtown business community. And then lastly, expanding parking supply. So as our downtown continues to grow and attract more visitors, businesses, and events, we recognize that additional parking capacity would help meet demand, especially during peak periods. However, new off-street parking carries significant costs, not just for the land acquisition, but also for the actual construction. A new garage, not including right-of-way or property acquisition, is estimated at about $35,000 per space for the total cost. So you're looking at a three-and-a-half-million-dollar garage for 100 spaces. Again, not including just the the land to purchase it. So we're really here recommending first trying to make the most of what we already have by working creatively with property owners to promote and encourage shared parking arrangements where property owners partner up with nearby businesses and make their lots available for employees or customers. You know, again, on their, kind of on their terms, right? Picking the days and times that that work well for them, or possibly opening parking to the general public in some form, whether that's unpaid or paid, like the the Bank, the Bank of America lot has done. And then, secondly, a recommendation to look at reconfiguring streets with excess width to provide angled parking, which generally gives you about a 50% increase in parking if you're able to do it on one side of the street over parallel parking. So we have identified some sections of street. Earlier, I mentioned the challenges associated with the median on Pedalma Boulevard North. So that seems like a a block where it may be worthwhile to consider implementing where you could move some of that loading activity to the curb, which would remove parking spaces, but then gain that back by having one side converted to angled using that width that was previously used for the the central median. Other streets include Block of C Street between First Street and Second Street, where we've got a right-turn lane that really isn't needed, right across from the Theater Square Garage there. Sections of Keller Street up by the Phoenix Theater, Liberty Street, pretty much all the way from Western to Washington, where there's some excess width. And so generally, we're looking at streets that have about 45 feet or more of width to implement angled parking. But there are some other important considerations, including driveways. You can really, you'll lose the the increase if you have a lot of driveways on a block. You can get away with it on some slightly narrower streets, like your Fourth Street or Fifth Street potentially, given that there's less, a lot less traffic. But it is, it's definitely tighter on our typical 40-foot downtown streets. So with with any of these, prior to implementation, we would be doing additional analysis and engaging the community and our downtown stakeholders to review and provide feedback on the proposals before before implementation. But it is, it is certainly a tool in the toolkit, and we do feel like there is some some low-hanging fruit out there. And then lastly, not included as a as a recommendation, but of course, we did look at paid parking as part of this exercise, given that it really, it can be a very effective tool at promoting turnover and helping to distribute demand more evenly across an area like our downtown. What we found through our conversations with the downtown business community, stakeholders, you know, definitely a, not a very popular option, and definitely some some concern about impacts on on business and visitation. So not including it as a as a recommendation at this time, but would like to highlight just that it does seem to have very high revenue-generating potential. There are a lot of different ways that it could be implemented, and depending on the the pricing that's implemented or the scale, you know, the area where it is implemented, we have some models that we generated revenue estimates anywhere from $5 million for a very limited, affordable option to up to $14 million in annual revenue for a more aggressive pricing strategy. And so that's included in Appendix 5 for for your review and potentially for future consideration, if that's something that City Council ever feels they would like to explore with the community. And do want to highlight that we would strongly recommend, if if this is ever explored, the creation of a parking benefits district, which would ensure that that revenue then gets invested back into the downtown area. So lastly, our staff recommendation for tonight is to approve a resolution adopting the downtown area parking management plan. And you, of course, also have the option to adopt this with requested changes noted in the resolution. And I'll actually lead off with one recommended change that the consultants and I caught. Just prior to the meeting, we realized that we did not include any of the parking count data, the the more detailed tables that break out the streets and off-street lots in the appendices. So we would like to add those to the appendices. So one requested change from us to add there for anyone who really wants to do that, that deep dive on the on the data. With that, happy to answer your questions. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Great presentation. I mean, a lot of concern in this area, so I'm glad you're doing that. Can I ask you to repeat that last staff-proposed change?
Adding parking count data to the appendices.
All right, bringing it up here to council, who wants to kick off on some thoughts on the content? Questions only, 25 words or less, ending in a question mark? And all right, well, let me, let me ask a couple here. Why is Keller Street more of a problem than Theater Square Parking? Why, why do people feel safer or better in one than the other?
Honestly, I'm not sure. I think it's, yeah, I I don't know. That was something that kept coming up with our our focus group and then also in the visitor survey. Good question. I don't know if if our police chief, do you have any insights on kind of the relative, like?
Let me add one other element to it, you know, from a user experience, I believe. There's a greater homeless population and nefarious actions at at Keller than there is at Theater. And I'm wondering if enforcement or is it is a structural design-type question? Or is it, first, what are the practices that are different between the two structures?
Your, can I, can I jump in and comment as well? Hi, my name is Franny. I was one of the consultants on the project. One thing we heard about Keller Street that we didn't hear about Theater Street Garage, Theater Garage is Theater Square, is that employees who work downtown late at night are instructed to park at Keller Street Garage. And so there's a much larger late-night population that's citing discomfort because they might be using the structure at closing time or, you know, late at night versus Theater Square has a different user population kind of built into its design. It's also just not used as intensively as Keller Street. So it might be that there just wasn't a population responding to their experiences in Theater Square, whereas we were hearing about people's discomfort with Keller Street based on the total utilization.
Thank you very much. I'd also like to go to how the surveys were done, the interviews were done, and the personal experiences. Many people asked for many different things. Everybody wants to park in front of their store or the store they want to go to. I mean, you know, and they want an Uber spot there, and they want an Amazon spot there, and they want, everybody wants everything. Are the freight, the questions framed? You can have one, which one's the most important to you? Because I think we all want everything, and if the question's phrased that way, it isn't great data. And it kind of feels like we're still in the phrase of this where everybody wants everything, and there, nobody's asked, which would you give away first?
Yeah, and I think through those conversations, especially with the with the business and property owners, there is the, you know, the focus group kind of starts with everyone getting those frustrations out, right? And and sometimes they are contradictory. So we've heard that the short-term parking is good for business, but we've also heard short-term parking is bad for business. And I think through this, there's been a good dialogue, and we hope to continue that with with the business community to really educate them on, just facilitate that dialogue and education around all of the different needs that we are trying to accommodate in a very constrained area. And and it will require a blended approach. It's not going to be zero-sum. It's not going to be all two-hour. It's never going to be all two-hour parking or all four-hour parking. We're going to need a really good, diverse mix of of options to accommodate all the different things happening downtown. So and unfortunately, there's not a a formula that I'm aware of or that I think our consultants are aware of that says 25% of your curb space should be loading. 25 should be short-term, 50 should be two-hour. Because things change downtown, businesses turn over. You have one business occupy, you know, one business may be really reliant on deliveries, and another might not be. So I, we're going to shoot for a greater diversity of curb uses than, or we recommend implementing a greater diversity of curb uses than we currently have in place today, and see how that goes, and then continue to make tweaks and and just try to get, try to optimize it to the extent that we can, but it will never unfortunately be perfect.
Yeah, okay. The, there's a whole section of what seems to be legally required and and the red curb, daylighting, et cetera. The ADA change that you propose to make, how many spaces will be lost to general use to get compliant with best practices?
I don't have that, I, we can come back with that number. I don't have that off the top of my head. But you would, I, you'd be safe to expect on any block face that does not currently have a, an ADA space that that one would be added.
And did, you know, we're proposing to go out and visit with private lot owners, and we have great experiential data from B of A and their parking, their metering conversion. Do we have any idea what it costs to do metering in private lots? What's their experience?
There, I don't know what the, what the installation of their pay station costs, but that's, that's all it is. It's just a handful of signs directing people to the pay station, and then an individual pay station where people, you know, go and and pay for parking. Their experience, the experience they shared was very positive. What they described was that prior to implementing that, they had a lot of issues with vandalism and and people doing nefarious things in their parking lot late at night. And then once they switched over to paid parking, not only did they start generating revenue, which they weren't previously, but it really seemed to discourage some of the other stuff that was going on there. So I know there, they, they provided a great testimony for it, and that's something we look to capture for other property owners for their consideration.
Thank you. In the report, you show a timeline of immediate, short-term, long-term. I guess that you didn't really touch a whole lot. Is there any of the implementation that you want to touch on?
Yeah, so there is a table, it's on page 31, 31 and 32 of the plan, and identifies the, each of the action items. And so we've got lead partners. I can actually share my screen here, kind of show people what we've got here. So apologies for that, but yeah, we've got short-term, so items that, yeah, here we go. That's a big monitor. There we go. Short-term items are things that we feel could be implemented within a year. So a lot of, that's a lot of the maybe regulatory items, things where we could, you know, swap out signs, paint curbs, things of that nature, educational or encouragement activities. We've also got medium-term, one to three years, and long-term, three to five years. So and then for each of these, we also have relative costs. Do not have dollar figures for all of these yet, but generally, could it be assumed that $1 sign there is under $100,000, in some cases far less than $100,000? $2 figures would be in the 100 to $500,000 range likely, and then $3 figures, looking at a million plus. So again, just a rough exercise here to kind of give an idea of what we are looking at. But with the implementation of a lot of these actions, we'd actually have to come back to council for consideration and approval. And and a lot of this stuff will happen. You'll start seeing things through next-year CIP budget, for example, where we're proposing.
So from this, from this report in terms of action, would you?
I would say that
In here, would you say the short-term things are within your purview to implement or chase immediately, but that medium and long would be reviewed in a, in the CIP?
Correct. Yeah, I think that's a, for most. There may be some medium and long-term efforts that are not necessarily CIP, that might be more. You know, I'm thinking like ordinance updates, but
Right.
Most of these, yeah, most of those near-term actions are things that can be addressed without CIP projects.
Yeah, I'm kind of looking at that like, how much we actually authorizing tonight versus, you know, what are things that we like but don't authorize yet? So that was it. So Councilmember Shreds?
Okay, I'm trying to get my questions down to short ones, but several. On the parklets that we have out there, mostly it's restaurants have them out there still. And we're working toward how many are going to actually stay permanent, how many are going to pay. And I'm thinking that, looking at the cost, I've heard the cost of actual a parking spot is pretty high. And so the question comes up, how many of those are actually going to stay? Or do we already know how many are going to be permanent, and what they're, and what is it they're willing to pay? Can we get a little higher price out of them?
I know that's coming back to council later in in the year with the, looking for a longer-term, more permanent permitting process, but I'll look to, is that information, Andrew, you're able to provide tonight on the the Parklet Program? Is that, do we have any more?
Good evening, council. I don't have a lot of information on it. It's, I know that economic development is working very closely, both with existing parklet operators. parklet operators, as well as looking at opportunities and then the interplay with parking. But I believe that they're close to having the final draft prepared to bring forward to council for consideration.
Okay, now, having been downtown eating at a couple of those places, some of them are doing really good business and it's using public space and public dollars to do really good business. So I think we need to re, if we work on that. Anyway, next one, on accounting, just for what was done and what we can do differently to do a better, easier, consistent counting down the road in the future. So was the counting done by walking down the streets, diving about, driving down or taking a Google van with cameras and flying over or with drones coming down? What method can we, was used? And then can we upgrade to an AI drone method to actually do some counting down the road so that we can do it frequently, cheaply, and actually get counts and actually know exactly what's going on all the time?
I'll look to, Franny, do you want to describe the parking count process?
Yeah, we used a sub consultant called TDS. Parking counts are their primary business. There are, and they did it by walking around downtown, counting manually and then sharing that information with us in Excel spreadsheet format, which we then mapped, and that's what you saw earlier in the presentation. As far as AI or drone accounting, I'm not aware of, I mean, I'm sure it exists, but I don't have the information for you about what best practices vis a vis AI accounting. There are in places with paid parking, oftentimes data that gets collected based on the amount of individual paid parking incidents. And that's, for example, something that Santa Rosa has been able to use to really good effect. They get continuous data that way, but it's very hard if you don't have paid parking to get good data without some sort of manual accounts. The only other thing that we have used occasionally is that we have a service called Nearmap, which is like really souped up Google Maps. They, they take aerial photos, sometimes five or six times a year. And so you can look at individual accounts over the course of the year at different times of day and different days of the week. And we have sometimes used that to kind of ground truth or level set. So that's, that's where we are now. We did also recommend some updates to enforcement technology. And so that's a conversation that you would want to have with your police force as well about using license plate readers for more effective enforcement that way. And that could also be used as some parking counting deployment technology.
Right, so that's one thing that was not in the report that might be for recommendation is that we, we really look at the technology, the, I said, the license plate looking, using drones to catch the cars. They're just moving from one block to another block to another block every two hours, whatever it takes. But I think there is enforcement technology, so I'd like to think about that. Then going down to, in the private lots, so far, the report sort of implied that we really didn't start the conversation with the owners of the private lots at this time. But one was mentioned as being, or they're already doing it, they're actually providing spaces for other businesses and doing it. Has anybody come forward and suggested, like, you've talked to the businesses downtown. So was that one of the businesses we talked to? And has anybody come forward and even suggested, oh, they're, they're open to opportunity?
Not necessarily during this study, although we're not privy, obviously, to every, you know, conversation that's happening between property owners or between businesses and property owners. I know another example that happens around the holidays with, there's a property owner who makes their lot available to Brewster's employees and visitors. I mean, that's done, that's done through an agreement between that property owner and that business. So those, those dialog, those conversations do happen and agreements are made. A role that we see, at least in the early stages, is potentially establishing some sort of a marketplace on the city website, a place for property owners who feel that they have parking that they would like to offer up to adjacent, to the public or to other, to developers, to other businesses, to list their, basically indicate their willingness to do so, so that they're easy to find and for other, others who are interested in finding some off street parking availability.
Yeah, and just looking at the opportunities for maybe highest priority, biggest bang for the buck, is the, getting those private lots opened up to either having them rented or for public spaces, is that our biggest bang for the buck that we could actually do in the short term as far as volume of number of spaces?
As far as number of spaces, yes, I would say so. It's just, it's a tricky one because it's, we're not, we're limited in what we can do as the city, unless we're talking about, you know, going in and purchasing properties. But I don't think we're having that conversation. It's, it's more, you know, seeing what we can do to facilitate or to encourage private property owners to move in that direction if, if they're willing to do so.
Okay, then moving to time, you said you were talking about maybe 30 minutes, an hour or two hour type thing. I know when I go to a restaurant, made for a nice long lunch, usually about an hour, but if the dinner is going to be more than an hour, breakfast, I can actually probably get under an hour. But is there spots around town where I go shopping, I can probably get that done with, within an hour, easily? So is there places in town that is mostly dominated by shoppers versus restaurant goers so that we could actually designate certain spots or certain sections of streets, two hours and one, one hour? Can we actually break it up by, by something or, because it doesn't sound like, there's possibilities, but it doesn't sound like, okay, so how do we do this? I'm not sure. How, how would that work?
Yeah, it's, I mean, up until this point, it's, it's basically been, you know, as a business comes in, they reach out to the city for consideration of, you know, they want yellow curb or they want green curb. It's kind of handled on a, on a case by case basis. We would like to move towards more of a formal process where we can ensure that it's appropriate for the location, it's, it not only meets their needs, but some of the adjacent business needs. And that's, that's always going to be challenging because like I said, businesses turn over, things change, businesses have very different needs. Generally speaking, I would say the blocks where we are trying to, where we will be looking to implement more short term and loading spaces would be on those downtown core streets where you see a higher degree of retail activity.
Okay, so, okay, let's get to the next question on, because we have parklets with restaurants that are taking up so many spaces and they're paying us so much per square foot for that. That's for restaurants, but for the shops, they just need one or two spaces. Could we actually put a program for them? Rent two spaces in front of your store, just you, only you get it, and you pay $1,000 a month to have your two spots in front of your store? Could we do something like that?
I'm not aware of any, any programs like that out there, but something that we can certainly explore, looking at other case studies.
I think it's totally fair, if we're doing it for restaurants, we need to give them five spots in front of their restaurant. We should give shops two spaces in front of theirs, same price or something different. But I think that was not considered, should be considered. Okay, going on. What you did not also mention in there is the, well, we talked a little bit about using bike lanes and stuff to park, but you didn't get into how much parking there is outside of the downtown, maybe, if there's an aerial that we could actually estimate available parking, maybe the larger shopping centers and offering the Lumago or even, hey, park here and we'll give you a free scooter to get to where you're going. Programs like that. So either a ride share programs that they're parking a little further away, let's say a mile away, half mile away, outside of downtown and self transport in or, or Lumago coming in. Is there, in the study, it doesn't look like it even looked at that? Is there somehow we can figure something else that might work in that area?
Yeah, for, for satellite lots, I think, for starters, you know, we've, we've really wanted to promote the city hall lots as an option. They are a resource, especially on weekends when city hall is not active and in evenings. So that's, that's kind of the closest city owned opportunity. The next closest city owned opportunity would, would be over at the fairgrounds, but obviously there's a lot more going on over there these days. So that would, I think, require a bigger conversation around kind of, you know, what some of the other uses happening at that site. But ultimately, we did not identify, really outside of those two opportunities, did not identify any privately owned satellite parking opportunities.
Good. And then for enforcement, for the, I do have some sympathy for employees that, especially late at night, have to go there, but those folks that are going, moving their car every two hours, just because it's, that's like that what they do is convenient. Can we do increased enforcement by either, if you only move at a block or two away for another two hour zone, that's not right. So is there, can we increase enforcement even though you move your car from one block to another block, two hour zone to two hour zone, that still should be enforceable? Can we enforce that and say, oh, by the way, you're still in the downtown area for the whole area, you're only out two hours, you got to be outside that quarter mile, you got to go move out of the entire area? Can we do that type of enforcement?
I believe that would require a municode update because I think the current requirement is tied to the block face or the block, Chief Miller is a block. But anyways, the, the current requirement is that you just move off the block face, I believe.
Yeah, that's accurate. So currently, the conditions are that if, as long as you move your vehicle outside of that block, you do reset that clock. So it would, as Bjorn stated, require a modification. So that would be something that we could evaluate, but that is one of the recommendations why we have been trying to do outreach with the business community. We want them to work with their employees, to really encourage them. There generally is parking on the top of the Keller Street Garage most of the time for their employees to go there. Generally, two, two blocks off Kentucky Street, there's normally, you know, available street parking. And so keeping Kentucky Street and the Boulevard accessible for patrons is really ideal. And I think we heard from council member now, when she used to work at a business, that was what her employer used to recommend, that she would hike up Kentucky Street, North Kentucky Street and walk down to the business. So that's still encouraged today.
Okay, I was thinking of carrot stick approach to encourage, say, if you, wait, so just as another option, looking at a carrot stick, motivate to go to the theater garage and not be in the downtown area and walk five, four blocks, four, five blocks to get to your place, how we can do that? So thinking about motivations, what can we encourage? Can we, I know it's the scooter program, so they rebate or whatever it is. And then, I just want to thank, I use Basin Street, I use the Theater Square every time. I just go down, I just automatically go there because I can always find a spot in, down there and it's free and it's all day. And I really just want to thank Basin Street for providing that to us. I don't think we can thank them enough for what they delivered back then. So if, if there was a way we can send them a thank you note tonight for, for that, that would be nice.
Councilmember Quinn?
Thank you. Just one point of clarification. Councilmember Shribbs had asked a question that, that indicated that restaurants are paying a fee for parklet space. Is that true? Do you know?
I, I'm not familiar with, I'm not part of the free range program. So I know that, I know that the, the goal with the permanent, longer lasting permitting process aims for an annual fee associated with the parklets.
Got it, okay. I just, I, I was under the impression that currently that that wasn't the case and that with a forthcoming parklet program that it may be introduced. But I was just, for clarification, thank you. One of the, one of the concerns that's been raised that I've heard about angled parking is safety. It, it creates a conflict point when someone's backing out. And I'm just curious if we have any data today. I mean, we have a limited amount of, of angled parking on a one way street, but is there other data or do we anticipate issues? And is there anything that we can do to mitigate that?
I do, yeah, I do recall looking at collision data for Kentucky Street and seeing some, some pretty obvious rear ends that were associated with people, you know, backing out of parking spaces and having, you know, fender benders. The, so yes, it is certainly something that, that can and inevitably does occur. Ways it can be mitigated are, you know, if you have a little bit more width in the roadway, you can provide a little bit of a buffer area so that, you know, there is kind of a, an area where people can stop and react before completing the move. So that will vary obviously from street to street depending on the width. Also, some cities have been implementing back in angled parking, which is considered safer because then you're, you know, you're, you're, you're pull, you're able to see oncoming traffic when you're pulling out of the space as opposed to doing it somewhat blindly with backing out of a space. So a little bit of a trickier maneuver, but some cities have implemented that.
Yeah, I'd just add the other, the other component in the downtown corridor that we're still continuing to work on and trying to get voluntary compliance and remind the community on is the speed reductions. So through the downtown area, we have reduced the speeds. We're still not seeing pervasive community awareness to that. We're still seeing speeds well over the old speed limits, well in the thirties. So speed limits are 20. We'd rather see people going much closer to 15 to 20 miles an hour through that corridor. I think with the changes that Bjorn's talking about, that would be a much more appropriate speed for those type of conditions. But I think the, the, that type of driving maneuver, parallel parking presents some of the same, but similar and different conflicts. But nonetheless, the traffic and the, and the speeds in those conditions downtown and the proximity of that all present some collision concerns for us that we, we will definitely have to be monitoring and making some adjustments or any, any changes.
Thank you. That's my, that's my only question. Thank you, Councilmember Barnacle.
Yeah, so on the, thanks for the presentation and for the work on the plan. On the parking count on the A Street lot, it was much lower than I thought. And I'm wondering if that's because we were counting the permit parking in there or was the permit parking excluded from the parking count on the?
Yeah, correct. The, the count only included the public spaces.
So we have a population that is aging faster than the state average. Should we be looking at going beyond the state minimum for ADA parking spaces, given that our population is, is older?
Yeah, I think it's certainly something that we can, we can look to implement. We will, it probably makes sense with any of these curb changes to, after implementation, obviously, evaluate usage and, and then make further adjustments where we're seeing kind of, you know, we might have some areas where we see a lot of demand for handicap parking, other areas where it's lower. Generally, you do want to have, you know, kind of minimum, at minimum, some one space per 25, right? That's the best practice, but there may be some businesses or activities in the area that maybe attract different user groups and where you might want to exceed that. So ongoing, I think, ongoing counts and monitoring of all of these changes will be helpful to just continue to make adjustments and, and further optimize the curb designations.
Okay. So I'm, I'm curious how the, the business community reacted to hearing that up to 40% of employees are parking in two hour parking and moving throughout the day. That's a glaring statistic for me.
Not with surprise. I think because in a lot of cases, they're, you know, they're, they're enabling it. So, or just, or, you know, some, in some cases, they practice it themselves. But there was a lot of interest, obviously, in figuring out other ways because there was recognition that really those spaces should be prioritized for paying customers and, and figuring out ways to obviously provide alternative options, whether it's using other modes or, or setting aside an area where employees can park and always know that there will be a space waiting for them. That's maybe in a, an area that's slightly less, has less demand for customers.
Got you. Thank you. So the other one is, I was talking to someone about this and they brought up an interesting, what I thought was an interesting enforcement idea. We're currently looking at like license plate reading. And what the person brought up was, why don't we put the, the meter stations in and just not charge, but use the tickets to basically determine how long someone's been there and if we should do enforcement, then we get the data to see like, of those tickets, how many of them are from the same credit card per se, right? And these are all zero, zero dollar transactions, but we get the data, we install the infrastructure for future paid parking. Is that? Is that, was that considered in this or?
That was not, I mean, I heard Franny a moment ago say that, you know, having some, a paid parking system does make it easier to understand utilization and, and different trends. But that's not something that we, that we looked at. And I'm not sure, Franny, are you aware of any, any case studies off the top of your head of something like that being done?
No, I'm, I like it. I'm going to look into it, but I'm not familiar with that as a practice that's been implemented anywhere to date.
Cool. So, and then the final thing was, did we do any sort of consideration about like where we're seeing a lot of towing or anything like that? Have we, did we do any sort of assessment of that? Like I hear sometimes from bullies, I've heard that. I definitely, it feels like every Friday that I'm at the block with, you know, there's like a call of like, everybody get your car out of there, they're towing. And just curious, did we do any sort of like hotspot mapping for, for towing?
We did not look at that as part of this, but I'm sure that's something that could be generated fairly easily based on, you know, just what we all know, kind of the things you mentioned, you know, knowing where those hotspots are. I'm not sure, is there data? Call in Chief Miller to share if there's any readily available data we could access for that.
Yeah. So the vehicle code requires that anytime, well, both, if we're towing a vehicle for any variety of reasons, a person's either arrested or a vehicle's left disabled in a roadway, we do an inventory of it and we have a police report associated with that. And then we actually work with our service providers locally. We, we use a vehicle code authority to tow the vehicle. Most of the locations that you're referring to are, are situations where those are private property. And so the vehicle code requires that private property owners notify or work with private service providers or tow entities and do private property toes. Those are reported to us when they're making that, why they're making that tow. And then when they leave the property, they let us know the vehicle so that, that if someone calls in, which they commonly do, saying their vehicle was stolen, we can say, no, it was not. It was towed from the, the property and this is the, the company that it was towed to. So we have those records and time and data of when those things sort of occurred and we could provide some of that data. But many of those locations that you're referring to are locations that for whatever reasons, the property owners either don't want individuals parking on their property, often they're raising concerns about criminal, criminal issues, vandalism, whatnot, concerns about liability and personal exposure, or just the fact that they don't, they don't want people parking on their, their properties. So we've, we've approached that. We've tried to have some, some conversations on the earlier questions that came up with some of these property owners about the city's interest in maybe having some collaborative conversations there. And they haven't necessarily been, been overly productive to this point.
Great. Thank you. Councilmember Kater Thompson?
Thank you. So a lot of the comments that have, or questions that have already been asked, I, kind of in my mix also. But I do want to just clarify on the towing with the A Street parking. So the city actually owns the A Street parking, correct? All of the entire area?
No.
No.
We own a portion of the lot. So we have, here I can, I think there was a question on this in the council.
Right, that's what I was wondering.
Questions. There are, I believe, 32 spaces at the south end of the property. Directly off of Keller Street that is owned and managed by the McNear, the McNear Building property owner. And so those are private spaces reserved for whoever they're issuing permits to. And then we have all of the spaces north of that kind of narrow driveway-like section. So in total, there are 16 permit spaces that the city issues and then an additional, I'm blanking on the exact number, I want to say 39 or so spaces available for general use.
Okay, well, thank you. And it's, it's a, just an odd situation. And then you're there and then all of a sudden you see that you're in the city area and then the other area and you can be towed. And it doesn't look good. So with the private parking or the private property owners, there was language in there that said that they would not be liable if there was shared use. Is that correct?
No, that's all kind of in, in the agreements that would, that need to be worked out whenever property owners do, when they enter into these agreements, that kind of stuff gets ironed out.
Okay. And, and then the other thing is to council member Barnacle's questions, how do we really get the data, you know, to see? Employees have been parking downtown forever. So this is a long-term problem that I think we really definitely need to solve. And I'd like to see like longer-term parking even out of the core district and see where we can really put that parking. And also I want just more information on angled parking because you're saying we would get 50% more. I mean, how many spaces is that exactly? And I'm intrigued by that. On Petaluma Boulevard, at first I really wasn't warm to that at all, but then when you started thinking about it, it really would give you a lot more parking and a lot more space. But on the other hand, Petaluma Boulevard is a major roadway. And is that going to create more congestion? And I don't know. It could be either way. So I'd like to know a little bit more on the angled parking because I think that's a, a real opportunity and a good opportunity.
So, yeah, okay.
Yeah. And as far as like, you know, the times, you know, I was intrigued when we were looking at having like different times for different parking areas in the core or even outside the core. You know, a lot of people only need 30 minutes, other people need an hour and other people need two hours. But then if you want to go to the theater, you're going to have to think differently if you have a movie that's two hours and 45 minutes. You know, where do you, you should park in the parking garage, obviously. It's too narrow for me. I don't like my car to get nicked. And so I ran into this the other day. You know, we, we were going to the movie theater and so I ended up in a two-hour parking space and did not get a ticket, council member Now, and stayed, you know, longer. And I, I just feel like we really need to educate downtown businesses on the importance of keeping these parking spaces for customers. And I like the idea of getting data by having kiosks around. And I hate the kiosks because you have to go to the kiosk and then walk back to your car and put a tag in it. So there's the pros and cons of it, but I think the data is valuable.
Question.
I will. And so the question is, I hope we move forward with that suggestion and figure out a way. The ADA spaces, I appreciate that. And the ADA spaces on a parallel parking versus an angled parking, is it different spacing?
Yeah, so you need a-
There's not the space.
With a parallel space, you now actually have to have a curb ramp at the parking space. So a new curb ramp needs to be installed. So parallel ADA spaces are going to cost somewhere in the neighborhood of $15,000 per space to implement. Whereas with angled spaces, you provide an accessible walkway. So one of those white striped, four-foot wide hatched sections that leads you to, could lead you to an existing curb ramp. So it's far, we are, we have a strong preference for implementing angled ADA spaces wherever we can over parallel spaces. So we don't need to construct a separate new curb ramp that's only used by that parking space.
Okay, thank you. All kinds of questions, actually. That's it for now.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Yes, I do, and I will keep them to questions.
Don't make me feel bad.
And going off of what some of the other council members have already mentioned, the, the Howard and Liberty Street, the agno, angled parking, the direction made a difference, whether it was clockwise or counterclockwise from Western because there's some businesses that would be impacted. Have we gotten back to those businesses about the angled parking and which direction? It would be great for the church.
Yeah, I know that project will be coming back for, I think for additional community engagement and, and ultimately council adoption or award of the construction contract sometime in 2026. So that project's been bumped out a little bit, but it will be coming back and that conversation is ongoing. Had a recent conversation actually with that very business about adding a yellow curb there to help accommodate some of their loading needs, so.
And it would also be the direction in which they approached the yellow curb for drop offs?
Yes. At this point, that, the, well, we'll be coming back with a staff recommendation. I don't want to get too into the weeds on that specific project here. But the goal with angled parking, I'll say, is to avoid driveways as much as possible. So on a street like the, that block with the church, the church has no driveways on, on their frontage on Liberty Street. So that's where the angled parking should go. If you put angled parking on the residential side, you wouldn't really gain any spaces.
And there is no AVA on, on those streets around the church?
I think we have a couple, one or two spaces on the, the church's accessible entrance is on the Howard Street side.
Yeah. But not on the Liberty Street.
Correct. And that's, they don't actually have an accessible entrance on the Liberty Street side.
Is driving around elderly parents, that's a really important, as I think council member Barnacle pointed out, our community is aging and that church has a very aging population. Also, I'm going to age myself, back in the 60s and 70s, the alleyways were used for deliveries. Now we're, they're using the middle of the street. I'm not sure when that happened or why it happened or why are deliveries not made in the alleyways, which was what they're proposed for.
I think the, the primary contributing factor is probably just the, the vehicle size has really increased with much, much larger delivery trucks, or trucks being used for deliveries. It's probably the, the primary factor there.
And then the other question I have on the block face, those two-hour streets, it's still colored, I believe, and like there's like three area block that's yellow. And then there's a, three blocks away from that is a different color. The reason I know is because, one, I've gotten tickets, two, I drive a lot. And two, 20 years ago, we had this in front of the council and I think I voted against it. But it's, it's not even convenient for an employee to move their vehicles because they have to move three blocks away because you can't just move within that yellow block or you'll get a ticket because you've been parked in that yellow block. That's what the block face is about. So is it still that different colors?
No, now it's-
Or now it's by street?
It's just by, yeah, individual blocks. So for example, from, from one intersection to the next and then you, you have to get off that block to the next, to the next one.
Okay. And then the, the enforcement for the parking downtown, there was, and I, I don't know what any, there used to be a parking enforcement car that had a little eyeball that took pictures and I don't know how they do it now. So what would this future parking enforcement equipment look like? Does the chief want to talk about that?
Yeah, I don't think we know what the future equipment looks like. Currently, we have two parking enforcement vehicles. I think what you're referring to was probably our first generation of license plate reader technology that we got in the early 2000s. We're in probably the fourth or fifth generation of that. We currently use it. A few years ago, there was a district court ruling that tire chalking was an unlawful search and seizure, which prompted us to get renewed license plate reader technology for our parking enforcement. So we do currently use that. We may have some, some data that we can pull and see if that gives some counts on how many vehicles. One of the complexities to it, and what I was recommending to Bjorn is, as we do the cleanup in here on enforcing all these different type of curb designations, one of the complexities for the parking enforcement officers is they're really focused singularly on the block face enforcement and doing that turnover, but they can't toggle off of that and do other varying degrees. So if we have a two-hour, a four-hour, six-hour, they can't change. And so they're on their route and they have to stay on a two-hour sequence. And so if they shift and do something else, they lose all that time interval. And so that's where the technology is currently. And so we're welcoming anything else. I would love to find something that not, not only works for downtown, but as you can imagine, we have other time-sensitive duration parking enforcement issues citywide. And I'd love to find a technology that's suitable to do that more broadly, that's super efficient, that I could scale. But I would welcome our consultants' expertise on that and any input otherwise. So that's the current technology that we're at, and I think we're looking at evaluating what options are available to us.
Thank you, chief. The parking, the two-hour parking, if you're on Kentucky Street and you go to lunch and then you go shopping and then you see a friend and you, how often do they, do they go down Kentucky Street? Not that I'm trying to avoid getting a parking citation, but is-
Yeah, you already have one ticket.
No, that's not my first.
So the goal, as you heard, so I've got two parking enforcement officers.
Okay.
They work six days a week, but that's split amongst the two of them. And so within the timeframes that they're doing the enforcement and they're doing that two-hour rounds, their goal is really to go in circles. But there's three different routes and they go through those routes, through those block base rules, and there's, it's pretty repetitive. And so if the, if the formula is really working and we're seeing the turnover rate, the goal is to go through and not actually get any tickets. And so if they're writing tickets, then it also stretches out how efficient they can be, right? If they're going, every single car is in violation, getting through that route is going to take them a lot longer. So it's really, it's really contingent. But, you know, hopefully we're staying as close to those two-hour intervals and getting through and touching all the streets within the downtown corridor to making sure that we're getting the high visibility that will also get the voluntary compliance to make sure that we're keeping people honest and turning it over.
And I'll just quickly add, that's, that's part of the benefit too of looking at extending time limits on those lower demand streets on the periphery. Now you have less need for police to be actively monitoring those streets or at least less frequently, right? And they can spend more time on the streets where we need them most, which is on those high-demand downtown streets.
Thank you, chief. I just want to warn other drivers and, and customers of downtown. And I do know that when I go get my hair done, it's going to take six hours and I'm going to be parked in the, in the garage. There was a, a public email. I was hoping maybe staff could answer about the A Street permit parking. So you don't have to do that right now, but can someone get back to that?
Yeah, absolutely.
And because it is very confusing at the A Street, I think council member Kater Thompson mentioned that. I think that's all I have, but one thing, does the city get money when the construction dumpsters are in those parking spaces? Like right now, there's one outside of Bank of America, I think that's Martha Street. And then there's one on the Boulevard before you get to Dela Fatora because there's a parklet and then there's just, there's no parking on the Boulevard right there because we have a construction dumpster, the parklet.
Sure. Yeah, so the city can collect what are called encroachment fees. So anytime there's something in the public right-of-way, there's a process through the public works team for an encroachment permit for something to be placed in the public right-of-way. I don't know- I don't know what that fee is or exactly what it is, but there is a process so that you can, uh, have those things in there. Otherwise, we get a call and we're coming out there and we're getting a tow truck or we're moving it out the right of way.
And then I was also noticing that like on Martha Street, it's already that diagonal parking on one side, uh, or both sides, but there's no ADA. There's no ADA over there that I, that I saw. And I actually saw someone park illegally with their handicap. And I said, that's not a handicap. He goes, but it's the most convenient for a handicap because I can open my car door because they need more space. The ADA takes up more space. And I said, and I think the Adobe Road Wainery, when they open up their facility, they'll have lots of these ADA with the modern, larger capacity ADA parking.
I think you're talking about van, the van spacing?
Yeah.
And, and is that incorporated into the number of ADAs we're going to use? How many are van versus car?
Uh, no, so developments, uh, development projects will look to generally accommodate their, um, accessible requirements onsite. Um, I'm not sure about the specifics of that project. I don't know if you have anything you want to add, Andrew, but.
We're okay with project specifics, we're doing a plan here, so.
We're generally looking at city streets, right? And looking at those areas, especially where businesses do not have onsite parking, right? Looking at Kentucky Street, your retail and dining, uh, your streets that are lined with, with businesses. That's where the city's highest priority is to add, add those spaces.
Okay, uh, Councilmember DeCarle.
I think I'll hold some of my questions for conversation, just to hopefully have more of a dialogue about them. But, um, I do have a few now. How much did we pay the consultant for their work on the study?
Uh, zero dollars because MTC paid for it.
How much did MTC pay for it?
A hundred thousand dollars.
And do we know how many visitors are going downtown by vehicle every day? And using the parking and many businesses?
No, I'm sure, I'm sure an estimate could be provided. That would be, that would be really tricky to figure out. Um, but I'm sure it could be done or an estimate at least could be, um, generated based on, um, kind of the typical turnover that we see plus, um, plus the occupancy. But it would really depend, I think, by, yeah, day of week at least, or maybe some seasonality.
Okay, and then, um, you know, in the time since January, the last nine months or so, how come we didn't do any more? I mean, we only have a few afternoons and evenings of, of study time to kind of just do a windshield survey of parking spots in town. How come we didn't do more of that to try to encompass different times of year, seasons? Um, you know, busier, less busy times?
Um, I mean, really, Franny, I don't know if you want, feel free to chime in on this one, um, with the methodology. But, um, you know, you're looking at kind of finding the, the general, um, sort of your typical conditions, I think, with, with a study like this. So, um, we had, uh, you know, June and October, um, not necessarily, low visitation periods, but maybe not like the absolute highest visitation, right? That you might find in, in December. And that's just, that's going to give you a better sense of what's happening, um, for the vast majority of the year. Uh, and so, you know, we're really, we're planning around typical conditions. Um, peak conditions and event conditions are, are kind of a beast of their own and, and, um, and generally speaking, anything you do that helps optimize parking utilization, um, in June is also going to help you in December, right? All of these actions, I think, would benefit us in the peak, peak seasons that are recommended in the plan. Franny, do you have anything to add to the methodology?
Uh, no, I would echo what you said. June and October are both typical. October is kind of the gold standard as far as what constitutes a typical month. Um, as far as why we didn't do more, there were some disruptions to the project timeline. We had initially intended to be done with this a couple of months earlier. Um, and so we were initially scoped to do four parking counts and then we did additional ones to capture a larger window of downtown life. Um, but there isn't a good way to do it that is cost effective without, um, as we said, the, the parking kiosks to collect data. So the windshield surveys are not an efficient way to collect parking data on a rolling basis. You do, um, inevitably end up with these sort of snapshots or moments in time. And that's a limitation of the form. Um, but it's also what is generally best practice or standard practice at least in places that don't have a better way of capturing the data mechanically.
Yeah, and I'm just using windshield survey as a general term to, you know, it could be somebody standing there all day or, you know, I don't know, just anything to count cars. But, um, anyway, I'll hold the rest for comment.
Thank you very much. And I'd like to open it to public comment. Would clerk please, um, read the messaging for public comment?
Yes, we did receive 13 comments ahead of time. Uh, and anyone else who would like to make a comment, please bring your speaker card to my desk if you have not already done so. Speakers are reminded to be respectful in their comments and that this meeting is being translated. Please pause between sentences for translation.
Well, why don't we just start the public comment period as people are still bringing in cards and Dave Alden is our first speaker? To be followed by Ben Peters. And are there any other speakers turning in cards tonight? Yes, there are, good.
Good evening. Uh, earlier today, I submitted written comments expressing concern that we had, let's say, rejected paid parking based on a poor application of the best industry practices. I stand by my comments, but that's not, I don't want to revisit that this evening. My comments are good. Instead, I want to talk about something else that was said this evening, that we listened to the merchants and they didn't want paid parking and that was our reason for backing away from it. I understand the merchants saying that. Pretty much anywhere you go, that's the immediate response of merchants. It's their intuition and I get it. They're, they're not parking experts. It just feels them, to them, that's not going to work. The reality is, across the country, there are hundreds of examples of places where cities said, no, we are going to do paid parking anyway. And in virtually every case, it is good for downtown. The story I love to tell, this is early in the history of Don Shoup, who is the pioneer in parking reform. He was this wild eyed, energetic, long haired econ professor at UCLA who had this idea that paid parking would work. There were two cities in the LA area, Pasadena and Universal City, that were struggling. They had derelict downtowns, they had areas of blight, they had problems. He met with both and pitched his paid parking as a solution, the 85% rule. Pasadena, on a very close vote, said, we'll try it. Universal City said, no, we're not doing that, create the idea. Today, Pasadena City, Pasadena downtown is a really cool, trendy place. There was a council candidate recently who wanted to get away with paid parking and he had no chance of winning election. Everyone saw that it worked perfectly. Universal City, I didn't know Universal City had a downtown. Nobody ever goes there. Clearly, paid parking is, in almost every case, the right answer. I'm disappointed that we didn't, and again, not blaming Petaluma merchants for not knowing that. It's not their job to know that. I'm disappointed we didn't make more effort to educate them. If all we do is ask their opinion based on their intuition, we're not really doing ourselves any good. Changing parking topics completely, just a real quick story. Forty years ago, I lived in Seattle, little, cool little neighborhood down along Lake Washington. It had back in diagonal parking. It's a really odd configuration. The first time you see it, you go, that's never going to work. But you very quickly learn the skill and it's really sort of fun. And as I was sitting here in my seat, I pulled up a picture of that neighborhood. Forty years later, it is still back in diagonal parking. It is an idea that works and we should at least consider it. And if I end up living in a town that has a little bit of Pasadena and a little bit of Seattle, I think that's a good future. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you. Ben Peters, to be followed by Warren Dranett.
Good evening, everyone. I'm a bit of a student on the topic and I hope, uh, we have more conversations, uh, like this. I will say one little snippet, uh, from this book. Uh, it was Julius Caesar who, uh, created the policy for off-street chariot parking to reduce congestion on Roman roads. So, uh, to the extent your policies are not incentivizing off-street parking, you are doing it wrong. Okay, uh, as, uh, Mr. Dave Alden just alluded to, uh, one strong incentive is the pricing mechanism. I think this is a good policy that you have before you. Uh, I think the lack of any kind of dynamic pricing, uh, will prevent us from keeping free parking in the future. If our goal is to maintain free parking, then we need to have a mechanism that allocates a scarce resource. As a student of economics, the price function is the way to allocate scarce resources, period. The way we are doing that right now is with our time system and our ticketing system. Fifty-five million dollars, that's the decision you are sacrificing tonight. There was a nice, long conversation about the bond. You know, I was doing that math in my head, you know? Measure H bond plus measure U bond, two million, four million annually, five million from parking. That's fifty-five million dollars that we are choosing not to proceed with tonight. Okay, that's a decision you can make. I'm not advocating for it. I'm not saying if we don't do anything in here, that's not a good idea, but that is the math in front of you. On the topic of the pricing function, I do think what you should discuss and perhaps add to the plan is more parking enforcement officers. In addition to the new equipment that should be ordered, there should be more parking enforcement officers. If you have only two people and they're only doing the two hour route, you are not going to be ticketing those FedEx trucks. Another thing in the book, the city of New York City, they're getting hundreds of millions of dollars from FedEx and UPS. They're paying the ticket, they're happy to pay the ticket. It's the cost of doing business for them. You have one parking enforcement officer downtown just ticketing FedEx. One month later, they're calling you up, hey, how do I pay for your new loading zone? Right, you know, what else can that parking enforcement officer do downtown? Make sure the Keller Street garage is very well and clear. All sorts of things can happen.
Thank you very much. Warren Dranett, to be followed by Darren Rakhuzin.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, City Council, City Staff, thank you very much. I am appearing this evening in my role as, uh, Chair of the Government Affairs Committee for the, uh, Petaluma Chamber. And I will give you my, uh, three-minute overview of, uh, this document which we have been discussing. Um, we did spend time talking with Bjorn at one of our meetings. We have spent some time trying to research it, to understand it. And overall, what I will tell you is, it's good stuff. We, we have our quibbles, but overall, what's in here is, is good stuff. Um, the plan is denominated a parking management plan, but really, it's about the visitor experience. And, um, as I've previously noted, parking is not an end activity. People don't choose parking downtown as my activity. Um, rather, downtown is about meals, coffee, books, antiques and lots and lots of other stuff. So the question is, how do we get people downtown? And the plan properly recognizes many modes, the way people get downtown, and that's important. The plan recognizes that adding, uh, parking is frequently expensive and typically disruptive. The plan properly focuses on how to better use existing resources, better management of the curb. Look at the ways, ways to increase the number of parking spaces, increase the use of short-term parking, better enforcement strategies, incentivizing employees and businesses owners to use designated parking areas while acknowledging their safety concerns, which must be addressed. And of course, changing use based upon time of day. Um, and there are other issues in there about improving the experience, uh, for other ways to get there, walking, bicycling, my favorite, Luma Go, um, and other ways. Um, I also want to highlight my remaining 48 seconds, um, about wayfinding. I think that is low hanging fruit. I'm a little disappointed to see that it's categorized into this second phase. Um, that is the way you are going to improve a person's user experience. Let them find out how to find parking, let them find out how to get there easily and the person's experience will be that much better. Um, I think a lot of what you're seeing in this plan is consistent with what you see in successful downtowns. We all visit other downtowns and I think these are really good ideas. I would finally, in my final six seconds, say, don't ever, don't, don't over-engineer this. Implement, adjust.
Thank you.
Succeed, thank you.
Thank you. Darren Rakhuzin, to be followed by Maureen Gottschall.
Uh, yes, thank you. I just wanted to, I came to the meeting tonight because I was at the January 27th meeting and I think what the plan, the final draft you have before you is a faithful representation of, obviously, all the work Bjorn and his team have put in, but the outcomes of what I thought happened, discussion of that meeting. Uh, I thought that was a great discussion. I thought a lot of the ideas in here are really worth pursuing and, you know, we've kind of optimized for the lowest capital investment solutions. I think we have a lot of underutilized parking resources. Uh, you know, I think there is an issue probably with the Keller Street lot and other lots to prioritize public safety in some way, to make sure those are being used. Having gone up in there recently, even on a Saturday night, it's not being utilized fully. Uh, and part of that is, and, you know, people don't want to park there, they don't feel safe there. Uh, so I think there's, I think this plan right now lays out good strategies. Um, I will say, you know, I didn't expect a discussion of the parklets and potential fees. Just to put a quick note in, because I work with a lot of restaurants downtown, including those with parklets. And, you know, their average five to six percent profit margin is already pretty tenuous. A lot of that's going to pay long-term debt. So adding any more free structures on top of it, you know, I, I would lobby against. Uh, and I also think that this is a way that a city like Petaluma that considers itself kind of a foodie city in Sonoma County is using public resource to support what is a struggling industry right now. I mean, we're seeing produce suppliers go out of business, it's, it's tough. So I just wanted to make that note about parklets, but otherwise, I think the plan, uh, lays out a lot of good strategies. It is backed by the data. There was one item I said in January that wasn't sure if TY Lin has commented on the data that we do have in terms of where does it rank in parking utilization? You know, when we look at the dwell time, when we look at these turnover rates, they seem to be in like the optimum range to me in looking at it, but I hadn't heard the expert's opinion on that. So that would be interesting to hear from the data we do have. Uh, and then it's really interesting to hear the discussion of how do you collect data into the future? Because I think like all good policy, this is grounded in the needs and behaviors of people now. And then how do you leave that open-ended to be adapted easily in the future as behaviors and things change? So, uh, thank you and I appreciate the work that went into this plan.
Thank you very much. Maureen Gottschall.
Yeah, I too am encouraged about the, um, willingness and wanting to continue the study because one of the biggest issues that I had coming here tonight was that it was on the methodology for the parking count. And so there were six parking count days. Four of them were, were done when we had the fair, Sonoma Rink County Fair. It was, and it was the weekend ones. And, you know, I looked at the fair numbers and there's 131,000 attendees in 2024 and that's 33,000 per day. So when we're talking about an eight, a typical day, this count doesn't measure that. And so if we're making decisions based on this count, I mean, I know there's all these other factors, it's a very complicated thing to, to do. And so I know this is just one aspect of it. But I'm really disheartened that they knew that the fair, it was brought up in the January meeting, that that count was during the fair. And then they, and the city didn't choose to continue to make some additional counts just to kind of understand that, oh yeah, we used, uh, we did the data count on like one of the largest events that detours people from going downtown and going to the fair. So I think, and I think that when you're doing that kind of stuff and you're basing your data. So I think, and I think that when you're doing that kind of stuff, and you're basing your data, you're basing all your decisions on the data, if the data is not good, then how do you make all the other decisions? So my concern is, I would like you guys to do the recount. I'd like there to be more counts. I think that more the better. I also would like to consider the Adobe Road Winery. This is also something that was brought up in the January meeting. That's a five-hundred-person occupancy. That garage across the street, the Theater District, is going to be packed with that. I mean, it's a car museum winery. People are going to be driving their cars here. They're, you know, that's, they're enthusiasts, they're car enthusiasts. So that's coming up to play, and I think those things need to be factored in. I know we can't go all the way out to the future of what-ifs because it's dynamic, but we know that's coming. And there is only the additional parking, which is very limited in the front on the Adobe Winery. And so I also want us to include in counts or in the analysis what that impact is to the city. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. And that closes public comment on the item for the evening. So I'd like to bring it back up to council and see who wants to lead off. Councilmember DeCarle.
So I'm not really sure how else to say it, but I'm not very impressed with the studies that have been done. You know, I'll go into the survey, and the very first thing, talking about the zip code where people live, it just uses a centroid for all the common ones. It doesn't tell you where people are from the city or outside the city in any way. And obviously, it's just a zip code, but then at the same time, the values that are reported, the consultant actually just averaged the zip codes as if it was a numeric value and not an identifying code, and spit out a number that makes no sense. And then did a sum of them all, and that's stuff that's reported in the report. If you look at, you know, some of the pie charts and how that data was reflected back to us, you know, talks about the count, the percentage, and the percentage is based on total respondents and not people that responded in those items. So I mean, a lot of this, it's very sloppy. I think, you know, I think if we did more meaningful data collection, we could create models and actually simulate what's going on. You know, if we're asking people questions about, whoa, like what road do you come in? Do you come in from D Street, the North End, the South End of the Boulevard, Washington? You know, where do you typically go, where do you like to park? You can understand where hotspots are, you can understand how people are using the streets to get there, how traffic flow works downtown. You can start to understand too, how long, and I know some of this was in the appendices that you added, but you know, you can start to understand like, okay, in a block like Kentucky, if there's a hundred spots there, you know, and the average time is, you know, an hour and a half in those spots. You know, you can add other spots where there's significantly more time or significantly less time than two hours. You, you know, you can break it up like that and create something that's a little bit more dynamic. Because right now, you know, I think a lot of us, we all live here, we have kind of an understanding of how it works, but again, it's, data tells us stuff too. And I don't think, you know, we should wait to start making some changes until we have years of data collection and observation. But I think down the road, those things will help us create a better parking system, which will be to the benefit of everybody, everybody that comes in, their experience, the businesses making sales and staying in business. You know, there's, I mean, I had a whole list of things we could consider. I can send it to you later, and again, some of them, you know, you did talk about tonight, but I wish we had had that beforehand. You know, tonight, because it's also been so long since January, I think that tonight should have probably been more of a workshop instead of making any sort of a decision, because I think a lot of the questions up here are based around some confusion too. You know, and you know, you talk about low-hanging fruit, and what can we do with the minimum amount of dollars? And it's, and you started on some of this, and it's attracting people to the parking structures more. There, you know, I, I mean, what was it, about forty dollars per space is what it costs to construct them, or?
Thirty-five thousand.
Forty-five, okay. Yeah, so you know, as a significant amounting per space, we should be really trying to say, hey, let's get people in there. And I feel like the solutions are simple, and again, you're working on some of them, and that's great. But that's one area we should also really be focusing on. And so, you know, I don't know, to me, I don't know if a decision makes sense tonight, if we should just be giving feedback and recommendations and you continue to work on them as you already have been since January. But that's kind of how I feel. And then as far as putting, you know, parking kiosks downtown, not charging, but using that as a way to collect data, I think that would work, but then how do you incentivize people to go take the time, get the ticket, put it in their car, or whatever it is? I mean, if it's free and they're not going to get fined for it, what's their incentive to do that? I mean, you can, you would get fined.
Yeah, the idea would be that if you don't have a ticket in your window, like you obviously, you know, you need to have a ticket in your window would be the thing. And you're going to be able to see when it expires, and just like a parking, like paid parking, except for you're not paying anything, right? So it's a data collection, to your point about data collection, it would give us really rich data.
Yeah, well, I mean, that's something we could consider then. But yeah, otherwise, I feel like tonight should be more feedback than anything.
Thank you. So I'm going to try and get us to a conclusion on the, how many items? There are fourteen different items on the palette?
Seventeen.
Seventeen, and so I'm going to try and get us to, so what I'm hearing is that all the low-hanging fruit ones, you're pretty much in support of.
Yeah, yeah, stuff as far as making parking times more efficient in street spots and utilizing the parking structures, and then talking to property owners with private lots.
Right, okay. And Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah. I want to just go on the record that I totally agree with Darren on parklets and parking, and the fees that we charge for them until we're ready to charge for parking. I don't think we should be putting a whole like mess of fees on our businesses because it definitely adds to the ambiance. I want to note that, like, the people who are experts in parking, a lot of them are economists. Donald Shoup was an economist, like, they're like people who really study like land use economics and things like that. And it's, it's not a vibes experience, which is what a lot of like the reaction is when we hear paid parking. I was in downtown at my favorite restaurant, and before they could even ask me what I wanted to drink, because they know what that is, they said, are we going to have parking meters in downtown? And they like swore me. And I was like, actually, no, that's not in the plan, like, we're getting our plan and hearing it. And then I explained to them like how this stuff works, right? And like, you want this, and you want that, and you want this, and parking is the thing, you know, and forty percent of your employees are parking on the street in the two-hour zone, and this is how we pay for all this stuff. And they were like, oh, I wish I would have asked you about that because like, it makes so much sense when you say it. Like, that's the, like, that's not, people don't think of that when you just talk about paid parking. So, you know, if I went to the business community and said, how does a two-and-a-half-million-dollar enterprise fund for downtown investment sound? I imagine that the Downtown Association and the Chamber would be interested in talking about that, what they would do with two-and-a-half million dollars for downtown investments and how we would beautify our downtown and all that stuff. And then I get to the like the poison pill, right? Where like, oh, what about, how, here's how we could set it up. And I appreciate your chuckle, Warren, I would love to have that conversation. And so for me, one of the things I'd love to see come out of this is like a council ad hoc that like goes out to the businesses and like made up of people who believe in paid parking. I believe in paid parking in the way that Dave and Ben talked about because I think that we need to do the education, I think we need to put together, if we're going to do it, like, I'm not going to move forward with paid parking without support from the business community because it's political suicide. But if they want a two-and-a-half-million-dollar-a-year enterprise fund that's for downtown investments and things like that, I certainly would be interested in working with the business community on how to make that come to life. I think it should be supported by the city, but I also think that we need to have the people up here who believe in paid parking that are out there doing the outreach and selling it, and selling the vision and talking about it. I note that almost all of our times, we are below the target capacity for what a healthy business district should be. I think that we, right now, we're not in a position where we need to move forward with paid parking. I think all the solutions here are no-brainers, and we should move forward with them, all the short-term ones. If we had a bigger problem, we'd be talking about bigger solutions and bigger fixes. We don't have that right now, but I think we also need to recognize that the world's going to change, Petaluma's going to change, and we should start talking about how would those things change sooner rather than later so that there is that education that we're talking about, that Dave mentioned, because we're not going to be able to move forward with solutions like real solutions if we don't do that education. So I'm, I'll note that like, I don't see why we need to continue with the A Street permits. I think those are sort of a unnecessary thing, to be honest. Every time that I go by them, I'm sort of frustrated that someone like has that, and it's that, so that's, I just don't see that being a need. I think the, I'm a big fan of the angled parking. I think we should look at some low-hanging fruit on that in the near term. And I'm particularly like interested in the things around Fifth Street Walnut Park and then the stuff around on Keller and Volpe's, just because there's like a pretty big problem with people getting towed out of that parking lot across from Volpe's. And I think that everybody would like to have additional parking spaces within a stone's throw of Volpe's front door. I really like the C3. I think that's a great idea of extending the four-hour to four hours outside of the core. It allows for better enforcement inside the core. And, you know, I'll just say like, what's sort of irking me is when I look at the action plan, like, the number of dollar signs there, like, we should really have like negative dollar signs because all of those things are negative, they're all costs. And it's sort of like if I were going to the doctor and saying, I want to run a marathon in three months, and he says, okay, great, you should get some great shoes, and you should get a personal trainer, and you should have your family members and your friends send you a text message every night saying to work out, but he didn't tell me to stop smoking cigarettes. Because like, that's the thing that is not there, is it's like, the way we're going to pay for that is all out of the general fund. And I just know that like, come budget season, there's going to be tough decisions. And so I'd love to see like kickoff and ad hoc with people who believe in paid parking to actually look at what a parking enterprise fund would look like, what it would fund, so that when we come back next year in the budget season, we can decide, is that something we want to do? Is, you know, and there'll be a slew of capital projects and things like that that are tied to it that are either going to get funded or not get funded. But I think that could be a good way to bring this forward and sort of put the, at least for the time being, the paid parking conversation to some closure. But obviously, it would, like I said, it needs to be driven by the business community, but, so that's my thoughts.
Councilmember Kater Thompson.
Well, I'll talk about paid parking because I have finally gotten used to paid parking when I go to Santa Rosa. When I go to Berkeley, I have paid parking because my shoe store kind of intersects with the neighborhood, but there's businesses on this one street. And so I've really come to the conclusion that I'm not willing to argue with myself about why I hate paid parking, because it really does work. And I'm there for the amount of time that I need to be there. And Petaluma had paid parking. I think we had paid parking, then it was removed, and then we had paid parking again, and then it was removed again. And a lot of this timeframe was when the Cottingtown Shopping Mall opened, and then you had San Rafael where the shopping mall opened. And then my mom even took me down to the Saramonti Center because we had shopping malls, and we'd never seen something like this. And during that timeframe, I think businesses in small towns, not just like Petaluma, all around lost business because of the shopping malls, and things are shifting now. And when I go up to Santa Rosa, you look at the shopping mall, they had paid parking, that's gone, but now they have paid parking within their downtown. So I think it's normal in most cities in the United States that paid parking is not the bugaboo that everybody wants to make it. I think it's actually beneficial for businesses, and I would love to be on an ad hoc committee to go down and talk with businesses downtown about the value of it. And, you know, I'm just going to bring up the bugaboo that, you know, here we tried to get a hotel downtown because for finances, economics, everybody argued about that, and then we're looking at, paid parking could be really good for the economics. I mean, the downtown, if you walk around there, you look at the streets, sidewalks, they really need improvements. We need to beautify our downtown, and it takes money. And that's why, you know, a hotel that drives people into our town is a benefit. And I think paid parking is also a benefit. And I would like, I would like to bring that back for, you know, a further discussion in 2026. I think it's important. And we, and I just feel as though we're, we are so afraid of it because people write and say, I will never go downtown again if I don't, if I have to pay for parking. Yes, they will, because they want to come downtown because Petaluma's a great place to be. And it's only going to get better. As far as the parklets, I mean, I agree with you that the cost for those businesses, it could be a hefty cost since they are on a very small margin, but it is public property. And I think we just have to kind of balance that out somehow and find out the pros and cons of that instead, because I think they're important. The wayfinding signs, I do think that's really important, but that's not the one thing that's going to get people around. I think beautifying our downtown also goes with wayfinding signs, and we have a lot to do down there. And that's all I'm really going to say, because I think that, and the other thing is, with paid parking, we're going to address finally what's been going on for thirty, forty, fifty years, parking space is being taken by the employees and the business owners. And that's not fruitful for businesses, and that's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Well, I'll give you a little history lesson. The residents have boycotted downtown when there was a fee charged at the Keller Street parking garage. They refused to pay, and they just didn't come to downtown Petaluma. I don't recommend paid parking. Since shopping malls are free, people are going to go to the shopping malls. The Target shopping center's convenient, they'll go there. I don't want to see a fee added on top of what the residents or businesses already because, you know, they're going to have to validate, and they'll have to pay that parking, you know, whatever. Because when you go to a city and they have paid parking, you go into a restaurant and you say, can I have my parking pass validated or whatever? And then they, I think they end up paying it. And the reason I don't think the businesses downtown are going to agree to pay parking is because twenty years ago, we wanted to add a fee to alcoholic beverages that were served, and that fee would be collected via the bar owners to pay for extra patrols downtown so that we could have better safety twenty-four-seven downtown. And the merchants said, no, we don't want, we don't want to do any additional fees for our customers. So I don't think- So I don't think that the downtown businesses and their owners will be anywhere near enthusiastic for a paid parking. Also, we have new businesses opening, which will be impacting, one of our speakers mentioned, and we need to immediately speak to the property owner about those lots that used to be public or were shared with the public. The one by Volpe's, you could go over to Volpe's and get a little pass that said, "You're a Volpe's customer," and they would put it on the windshield and not tow your vehicle. They took that away from the Volpe owners, and that was too bad. And there is more demand for employee parking and customers during the holiday season versus June and July, so I think our data was a little flawed. The loss of 58 spaces due to daylighting, and then you have these construction dumpsters and parklets, I think that we're shortchanging our supply of parking. I'm all for parklets that look nice and have, you know, a nice aesthetics with plants or, not the orange beer case that say Petaluma property. All throughout Europe, they have little sidewalk cafes, and they're, they're beautiful. They're really well done. I don't, I don't know if Luchette still has, they had a really nice, they had patio furniture, you could eat a sandwich or your salad on the, but it wasn't enclosed. So if the restaurants want to have rest, you know, tables outside for their customers to eat, I don't think they need to be into the parking areas, so that's my two cents on that. And the safety concerns I have about extra-large vehicles in the angled parking, we have, you know, nice little compact cars, but you get some of these, what is it, Lincoln Escalade or whatever, that's like three times bigger than my SUV, and it will, it will extend out, so how do that, how does that work? I mean, is there, I know it would just say comfort compact, a compact SUV, or, you know, those larger vehicles, and Petaluma, we have a lot of drivers with the big four-by-four, those big trucks, the cattle trucks or whatever, and I think some of the teenagers even drive those big trucks. I don't know where they're going with those big wheels, because it's not like they have to cross big terrains to get to school, but anyway, they're parked along outside the high school, so I know we have a mayor. And I just have more concerns about talking to the community before we make any decisions, so that's my two cents tonight.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Quint.
I'm going to say, I really appreciated Dave, Ben, Warren, and Darren's comments. I thought, you know, they both came from different perspectives, but I, I don't think they're mutually exclusive. Some of the salient points that resonated with me, you know, I, I think the, the plan, you know, makes the most with existing resources. In my opinion, I think the proposed plan passes the common sense sniff test, right? It's just common sense stuff, and it's stuff that we should be doing without, you know, being worried about going out and doing additional studies or collecting, you know, extra data, like, these are just common sense things. The plan properly recognizes all modes, and I think we need to, you know, we need to be working on ways to get people downtown efficiently in ways that they choose not to drive. I agree that we shouldn't over-engineer this. I believe, I, I really, I agreed with Warren's comments on prioritizing wayfinding. And I, you know, as someone who's worked in the corporate world his whole life, his, my, my, my whole adult life, and, and having been around businesses, I know, I've seen what value you get when you invest in things, and I, I think investing in our downtown would pay dividends, and I think one of the tools that you can use to do that is with paid parking. And, but I also wouldn't, like, I think that is something that would need to have the business community, you know, their, you know, their buy-in. It would need to be something that they would need to be excited about. I wouldn't vote for it if our, if our downtown business community was telling us they don't want it. And, and, but I do believe it would help, and I think, I think it would help in addition to just a financial investment in our downtown that would make our downtown a place that would draw even more people to fill up these new parking spaces that we're going to get. I believe it would help with other sort of key objectives, like a more frequent turnover and, and, and reducing congestion. You know, when you've got one or two parking spots open on a block at any given time, you have fewer people just circling the town looking for a spot, and so I think that's a benefit that comes with it. You know, again, I, I would reiterate, I'm not, I'm not proposing that we move forward with something that there's not public support, but I would love to at least have the conversation as part of an ad hoc and be engaged with our business community and, and, you know, again, have the opportunity to have that conversation and see if we could make some, some strides there. I fully support the plan and would love to see it go forward. That's what I got.
Thank you. Councilmember Shribbs.
Okay, so I'm, the good, bad, and ugly a little bit here for me. So I went through it, and what I saw is, I don't see a plan. I see strategies and options. I don't see an actual plan. A plan has goals, objectives, some timelines, and some implementation and some priorities. I see 100 options, possibilities here, lots and lots of options. Some of them are going to be capital improvement projects requiring a whole process engineering to kind of do things, some of which are going to just be repainting some streets, some of, but I think the, the number one thing, which is the biggest bang for the buck in my mind, is talk to the private property owners who have lots that are not being used, and let's do a sales pitch, provide them with money, incentives, whatever it takes. Open up your parking lot, and let's get 1,000 parking spaces more used. That's the number one thing we should be doing. That's the cheapest thing, that's just a little bit of money and some talk. So that should be the number one thing we go after, absolutely. And then after that, oh, if there's little things we can do, a little painting, okay, let's on one of the streets, one thing at a time, the easiest low-hanging fruit, okay, take one little side street instead of parallel parking, okay, make it angled. Try one, and then do one more, and do one more, as we can do them. But some of the things, if we're going to be trying something that's going to be a lot of conflict socially, a lot of conflict with business owners, it's going to take a lot of effort, do that last. Do the easy stuff first, do the simplest, the cheapest, and, and get that going. I think all these options are great. I'd like to do them all, of course, that'd be great, but we're not going to do them all, and we're not going to do them all in, in, in one right after the other. We're going to have to pick and choose. So in this next year, even by the end of this year, let's take one of those streets and repaint it, make it angled, just even one. Do that in the next couple of months. Implement. Stop studying. Start implementing. Do the sales pitches. Get a list of all those property owners. The other thing we're finding out is still towing. I've asked several times, I want data on towing. How many are getting towed? What's the cost of towing? Who's doing the towing? And I want the data, and I've asked for the data several times. I'm hearing that, oh, it's option, we do have it, or supposed to have it, oh, but they might be providing it. What's going on here that we don't have absolutely hard data on exactly the exact number of tow jobs, what they're paying, who's paying it, and where this is happening, all the hospice? Absolutely, that should have been part of this study. Why isn't it part of the study? I'm really mad that that's not part of the study. I've asked several times. So that's got to be a part of it, and we got to demonstrate, how are we going to avoid that in the future? That's not in the plan. Where is that? So I'm disappointed there. And all these, and there's so many options here, great strategies and everything, but I'm not really hearing prioritizations, objectives, or goals of how, and what, how are you going to measure anything? How are we going to measure that we've improved what we've done, that we have timelines? So what are you going to do to measure the number of parking spaces down the road? Now, as far as the downtown, the core area, there's three or four streets in there, okay, paid parking, sure, we can do it on one street, Kentucky, let's do it on one street, see what happens. Are we going to get one street done, if we're going to do anything? Do it small, do it quick, do a pilot study, make that happen, but if we're just going to talk about doing this stuff and then raise all hell and have everyone yell at us for doing this or doing that and indecision, we're wasting our time. So, anyway, so I'm, that's like, I'm feeling a little bit of good, bad, and ugly over this. I'm not going to call this a plan at all. I'm not going to vote for it if it's, if we have to be a plan. I need to see, oh, what's the restriping on Petaluma Boulevard in that section there? What does that look like? What are the dimensions? How's it going to happen? Where are they going to put all that stuff? That's a plan. This is a strategy. So I'd say move forward, but start implementing what you can right now, and, and make a few things happen, and, and make some action. So anyway, that's, that's how I'm feeling right now. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Vice Mayor, good point.
I just passed the mayor a note saying we need to take a motion to go past 11 o'clock. So I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor, to go past 11 o'clock.
And we have a motion by now and a second by Kater Thompson, and can I get an acclaim that will continue past 11 here? All those, thank you, by a claim we're continuing past 11. And, you know, I, I quite agree with Councilmember Shribbs that what we have here is a lot of strategy, and, and, and I think it was a lot of work to pull this much strategy together and this many options, and I think the way it's been explained is, is comprehensive, and it's a great way to start further conversations with the public. The, the conversations about metered parking, I, I think it's clear to everyone who understands that, how parking works, that if you have a highly congested area, you, and you implement dynamic pricing, parking, metering, well, you can really improve that situation. So I'm glad it's in as the appendix, I'm glad we're talking about that. What we haven't really convinced the public of is whether there's a real parking problem that they want to take real measures to do, or whether we think we have a parking problem that we can feather the edges of and fix. So I think since feathering the edges of it, the common sense approach that Councilmember Quint says, is of rather modest cost and rather modest social impact, I think it's brilliant to bring forth those things first. I do want to note that things like parklets and, and other things we do are part of our economic plan. They're part of the character of the city. We, we do things like that, and so while there's a direct benefit to a restaurant with a parklet out front, they're an anchor tenant in bringing people into the whole of the downtown, and, and I don't have a problem with that. There, there's probably a right pricing for, for addressing that, but, but nonetheless, it's, it's still a brilliant idea to have more people, much as the tents are on Water Street along the river. You know, those, those are lost parking, we haven't talked about that lately. But what do we want for economic development in the downtown? What do we want for character in the downtown? That's a longer conversation that we've engaged in tonight. I, I am, Councilmember Quint said he wouldn't, how did you phrase this, vote against something that the, you wouldn't vote for something that the public was against, and I am very uncomfortable voting for something that the public isn't here saying is the solution. I mean, people complain about parking. I feel that if they're not here, hearing this, or we're not getting letters saying, "This is the answer," then, you know, maybe, maybe we're ahead of the cart, maybe we haven't done the public communication far enough. I have lots of ideas and specifics, but, but I think I'd really rather that we provide almost the same direction we provided in January of do the common sense items, do, do all the structure improvements, the signage improvements, the website improvements, the work with transit improvements, all, all of those things, but we not pass a resolution in a plan until the public is here saying, "That's the plan we want." So I'd rather we not even take a vote tonight, other than provide staff direction to get busy on all the things that can be done without capital project. And I think, and that's where I'd like to land, because there's so many good items in here. I, separately, I have this observation of Kentucky Street, where there's a lot of traffic always on Kentucky Street, and the parking is always full on Kentucky Street, and trying to back out of a parking space backs traffic up quite a bit. And I think I'm a supporter of diagonal parking, I have no problem with that, but I think it's very important that we say where that would be a good application, Liberty, some of the others we talked about with WIS. I think it's a horrible idea on Petaluma Boulevard. I think horrible in the sense that the traffic discussions on Liberty, Keller, Kentucky, all those are one aspect. Talking about the traffic on the freeway that is Washington, or the freeway that is Petaluma Boulevard, way different animal, and it doesn't belong in this conversation. I didn't note in the presentation, or in the materials until the presentation, that there was discussion of providing delivery space along there, so replacing parking with delivery space. That kind of nuance and complexity, I think, needs to be packaged wholly separate from our general crafting of, of parking improvement. And just so that, I don't, not say I agree, part, private, our opportunities are in the private lots, if we can get compliance and cooperation for opening up more parking. So I think I'm going to bring it around one more time. I'm looking at those 17, is that what the number we have here is? And is, does anybody want to make a specific support of or voice against things like, I'm looking at Item C3, extend time limits from, from two to four hours on periphery.
Can we put, you're looking at?
Right. 31, 32.
31.
Would it be easier in the PowerPoint format or in the report?
PowerPoints is better, I think. Yeah, I'll share in a second. And I'm also in support of taking the two hours into some at 30 minutes, some at 60 minutes, and then asking the chief to find all the tech he needs to try and do that kind of crazy, different parking compliance.
So do you, were you wanting to go category by category and highlighting?
I'm going to, let me ask this here. In A through four, anybody have any comment other than staff should follow direction, follow this direction? Not seeing any. I'd like to toggle this page.
How, how would we incentivize employers in A2?
I think the details are going to need to be brought, that's by staff, but that, I mean, that's, that's the missing ingredient here, and I think that's why Councilmember Shribbs said this is more of concepts than plans, because both the specifics aren't here, and I don't know that we will get to the specifics tonight. You know, success could be, look like different things.
And there is more detail provided, obviously, in the plan too, under each of these items, so there's a two-paragraph explanation under A2 of some different, some different options. But yes, to the mayor's point, I think more of these will obviously require kind of research and, and following up, additional research and following up too.
And then would, is, is A4 necessary in this case, because we already have the active transportation plan adopted, and then this, this conversation is primarily about vehicles? Is, is that necessary to include?
Well, anytime you're talking about transportation options or, you know, or parking, right, part of that is the ability to reduce demand by getting people who Part of that is the ability to reduce demand by getting people who are interested in or willing to walk, bike, or ride transit to do that, or at least giving them a better, a more convenient pathway to do so. So yeah, I mean, really, that was included as just a nod to the active transportation plan. It's not like this, this item didn't include any specific recommendations, other than just acknowledge the ATP and the work that's already envisioned there, so.
Okay. And as I'm hoping we conclude with this as direction to staff, it's kind of, it's okay being in there since it's in elsewheres.
Yeah, just asking.
Can, can I add to A4, the improved bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure to and through downtown? There was many complaints that there was thefts of bicycles, mainly in the Brewster Restaurant area on Water Street, but also some bicyclists told me that there is nowhere, there's no bike lanes in the theater district, and there is no bicycle racks in the theater district. And I was surprised, because that's one of our.
But I would suggest that's part of the ATP discussions, rather than getting.
Yeah, but it would be part of A4.
We can strike A4 if it complicates things.
Okay.
And it's good feedback, too, that doesn't, we don't need to have, you know, if, if people have specific ideas or, or requests, right, around areas that need better bike infrastructure, pedestrian infrastructure, whatever it is, you know, we're always happy to have those conversations, whether they're in a plan or not. So some things are, are very easy to address, too.
Okay, toggle forward, please. Page forward. Were you pretty consistent on this, or commenting on this?
Would, would folks be interested in adding a B3 to create a council ad hoc on parking, paid parking, to engage the business community? Just an ad hoc to go talk to people? I mean, you can go out and lobby against it if you're that much opposed to it. I'm just an ad hoc to have a conversation about all the things we could do if we had it.
Can you please come to the dais and, you know, actually, we're going to go to the chase. I know you're available for presentations all the time, and I'm hoping that we can get your cooperation to give us plenty of openings, feedback. So.
V1, when you say increase availability, that means increase number of spots, turning it from a regular white spot to a green or yellow or spot, number of spots? If we're going to increase the number of spots that are turned to color and short.
Come back to B3 in a second.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's increasing the percentage of parking spaces in the two hour, what's currently the, the kind of the downtown core, that are signed for shorter term, shorter durations. So it would likely be converting existing two-hour spaces to 30-minute or one-hour spaces in the core. Not all of them, but, but finding, trying to find that sweet spot.
And have we already picked those spots where they were, would be best as yet?
No, I mean, the idea, again, you're trying to find sort of the ideal balance on each block face, based on the, what you've observed out there, what we observe out there with different, you know, businesses that are, are there today, but also future-proofing it to some degree and finding, so, you know, you're kind of trying to find that balance between what's out there today and also what may provide value, lasting value into the future.
Okay, so this is like what I was getting at earlier, because what it's going to take is, even to take one spot, we're going to change it from white to even green. We're going to have to talk to every business around, around that area, convince them that that's a good thing. We're going to have to put up a sign. We're going to have to get the public informed, and then eventually we get one little spot painted from white to green, whatever it takes. So that's, how much of it involves processes? How much conflict is that going to create? Can we just somehow, say, this is, we're going to do this? I mean, this is the how. I'm worried about the how.
I think we're, we're, you're trying to convince the rest of the council which direction. And I'm thinking that, again, we need the downtown business association to weigh in, maybe the chamber, weigh in and say, this holistic thing need, so I'm thinking a bigger plan comes back and we're not picking off ones and twos.
Yeah.
And is that what staff's intention would be, to have a, a review of the downtown? Before like trying to get one or twos here and there?
Yeah, well, I mean, so we, we do have the authority per the municipal code, you know, the city traffic engineer can make curb changes without council approval. That doesn't mean that it's something that we necessarily want to do or need to do, but we have that authority. And it's, I think, I think what, really what needs to happen here is looking at each block face individually, right? How many green spaces or yellow spaces are out there today? And then when we go stand out there, how often are we seeing people double parking? How often are we seeing, you know, people running in and out for deliveries, right? It's going to be a very granular exercise that, and that's why it wasn't done through this higher scale district-wide plan, you know, for the entire downtown. We weren't looking at every single block face with that level of granularity. It will take very, I think, very careful deliberation and consideration by our staff. I would hope that we could be entrusted to do that, and also to have that dialogue with business member, business members in our business community. But if you do feel that we need to bring back proposed curb marking changes, we can, we can do that as well.
I was all, I just want to look at the how, and I'm, I'm fine if, for staff to go ahead and, and do that and, and actually implement. That's why I was saying, let's implement and pilot studies and make it small, and do one thing at a time, and do, and then we can do repetitively several times, as long as, okay, that works out. So this is exactly the type of thing I'm seeing. Go do, and then, and then continue.
Thank you. I don't think we touched on this, but I think for larger loading zones, parallel the curb and things like that, that's one consideration. But there's a lot of loading need that's, could be in conventional vehicle parking spaces. And I would advocate that that not be yellow, that not be loading, but that if we have the short duration, it's also the Amazon Spot, it's also the Uber Eats food taxi, it's, you know, so that's the benefit of having a mix on the block.
And I just want to chime in, that I actually noticed, the mayor actually went by on a bicycle and saw me. I was on, I was walking around, looking at the street, Western Avenue, because there used to be a business that was a cleaners', and it needed that fast, you know, where the customer's going to pull in, go get their cleaning, you know, whatever they're getting or dropping off. And so there's like three, I think they're yellow, so they're, they're just loading. But there's actually two on Western, where the cleaners used to be, and on the other side of the street. So some of those might have to be changed because of the business. They don't need a loading and loading, actually.
Yeah, and those will really require.
And Kentucky Street has some too. And Keller Street farther up, they just need to be repainted. Some, you can't see the, it's, it's worn off over time, and some of it's on the old cobblestone.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of legacy curb painting down there that I think can be refreshed or removed or moved, yeah.
Thank you. Bringing it back to Councilmember Barnacle's B3, and the creation of an ad hoc for this, can, can I ask real quick what the formation of an ad hoc would look like? Can we just say, hey, the two of you go talk tonight? Or do we, would we need a process?
One of the best ways to create an ad hoc is just to ask for volunteers, because there's no formal council action. You have just a minority of this body. Give a specific charge, get back to us. That's a great way. Then that, those council members are also able to connect with staff, if that's helpful for what they're doing, what their charge is, or they, they just do their thing. So that's one, that's a good way to do it.
So in, in that case, I'd, I'd like to suggest that Councilmember Barnacle has a quasi-motiony thing out here in front of us, and I'd like to ask a straw poll, whether the council think it wise to assign an ad hoc to this matter. Those in favor of thinking of an ad hoc, please raise your hand.
But we're not volunteering.
Well, your hand's up. Okay, so it seems like it has a majority of support on the council. Then we're doing it here tonight, then. So what's the right number of volunteers, less than a majority of council? Do we, do we need three? Can we just?
I mean, I heard Janice and myself and Frank said he wanted to be part of it. I'd like it to be people who are, want to be part of the conversation.
Well, I think if, if it's going to happen, I would want to be on it. I don't want it to happen, but.
See, like, that's not the reason why I'm forming this ad hoc. I'm forming this, like, I would want to form this ad hoc to go have a community, like, like a talk with people about why we should, why we should look at it, what we could do with it. And I would like to have it be with people who, like, actually want to have that conversation.
Who want to have paid parking.
Understood, but the question on the floor.
I mean, I would want to have the conversation.
Give me a second here.
We can have the conversation.
Yeah, the, the, okay, now, now I got turned around. So the idea here is whether we allow an educational element to continue out from this council for this effort. That was what we're looking for volunteers for. Did you want to weigh in?
Recognizing that that, if you do that, and, and get three volunteers of the council to do that, all they can do with that is have those dialogues, come back and report to the full council, and it's the full council that gets to take action or not.
So, so I think I have four volunteers.
Which is one too many.
With, and, and, right, and so, do I really need to do a formal vote here on this to try and sort out who, who gets on the ad hoc?
Well, but if you want to look at the balance of the ad hoc, it's.
I'm not thinking the vote's going to turn out that way.
All right, okay.
I mean, if that's, if, you know, if you understand where I'm headed here.
Okay.
Yeah. So then, I think we have three volunteers for the ad hoc committee, which would be Barnacle, Cater Thompson, and Quint. And, and so they're empowered to go and visit with the community and report back on what opportunities they've had to explain paid parking.
Okay, could I, give a statement in here?
Yes, please.
Request, please.
Please.
One of the things, looking at, I would like to, if, if there was a vote on it, I would actually put Alex on it, because that's in, that's the closest to his district. The, the folks, the council members here, that are the closest to that district and most involved in that district. I'm far away, but I want, I would rather see Alex.
I understand the dissent, and so with that dissent, I'm going to ask the clerk to note four names for voting, and we'll do a quick vote on the ad hoc right here, one name at a time.
I have a question about the ad hoc committee. So if we're going to be doing an ad hoc committee, I want, we need to have information, I mean, real data on, if we did paid parking, where, where would it actually be? What would, what would be the fees or the cost, or different costs, to see how much money it would generate to go into the downtown? I mean, I need that information.
That scope, that scope could be worked out with the staff.
Yeah.
No, exactly. Yeah, that's what I would, that's what I'm asking.
So you're saying there would be staff support for, for the ad hoc group?
I want to go wee-wee out there and start talking.
No, 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 this is. So again, with the clerk, we have four volunteers, and I'm going to ask you, like we do our committees, to run across the council, Barnacle, Cater Thompson, and DeCarly and Quint, one at a time.
And if, can I make one quick comment, though, before?
Yes.
I mean, I just kind of want to spotlight this for what it is. I mean, this is baby steps towards paid parking. We, we started off the evening with, it's not on the agenda, you know, it's, it's, or not, not in consideration. Now we're considering an ad hoc for it. We're also considering putting, you know, parking meters that right now are free downtown, but with a flip of a switch, they could be, they could be programmed to charge people. And the argument would be like, we already have them.
I think we're moving a little further into the depth of, of this. I understand your slippery slope argument, yes. And I think the public does, too.
Can I make one comment?
Yes, please. I'm kind of looking for a little help there.
So, so Brian, either validate or nullify what I'm about to say. I think the intention here isn't for us to, you know, try to go down a slippery slope, rather it's to start to have conversations about it and talk to people about it. And, and really, that's kind of the intent here.
I think fleshing this out has helped a whole bit. I am uncomfortable with the ad hoc broadly, for similar reasons as Councilmember DeCarly is, while we're saying that's not today's mission. And any councilman who, a council member who wishes to do education in the community has every right to. And we've, by discussing this a little bit, we've talked about some of the complexities and problems of starting an ad hoc like this. So I think I'll go back to a show of hands first, if we, you know, and is there any other conversation? Anybody else have one to weigh in on this before I get all my motion, please?
How are we going to move forward if we don't have information? And if we aren't trying to look at, I mean, I just don't know how we're moving forward with this at this point.
We, we, Councilmember Barnacle?
Yeah, so the way this would work, in my mind, is there's a, you know, down there, they, they estimate the cost that would come from every street. So we do have costs, or we do have, we do have revenue right now, right? The way that I would see this is saying, trying to go and saying, you know, is, is it of interest to you to have an enterprise fund for investing in downtown? Because a lot of other cities have done this, and it's been successful, and I want to have that conversation with the business community. An ad hoc is not inching closer to, to paid parking. It's, the reason why you wouldn't want to go out and have that conversation with the business community is if you're scared of them liking it.
Well, my question is, why is the ad hoc necessary versus just going and doing the education?
Because it should be, in my mind, like, this, it should be a sanctioned conversation with city support versus one council member acting like going out and having conversations. We're already doing that. There's already, like, conversations going on out there, but like, if there's a council ad hoc on, you know, parking reform in downtown, to look, to talk about what a parking, you know, enterprise fund would look like, or a downtown enterprise fund would look like or something. And we, like, and, you know, you set that up with the, the chamber, you set that up with the downtown association, you can, like, actually, more like formal.
Officially.
Yeah, it's an official, you know, delegation going out and having conversations about it. I don't see why we're scared of having those conversations.
And Councilmember Cater Thompson?
I mean, I agree, but I mean, personally, I would also reach out to other cities to educate myself on their success of parking. Why are they not taking their meters out? Why are they putting on, in the downtowns? When I go to Target, we can't compare the Target free shopping with downtown. Those are two different animals, two different people shopping downtown versus Target. So I personally would want to actually get more information from other cities, which we can do.
And again, I don't think there need to be an official capacity on that. We direct staff to bring back the appendix with the data showing why Sandra Fell, why? Nobody say Sandra Fell earlier, with Sandra Fell's expertise in it. I, I think, I, you know, this is my opinion, and I would really rather get us to vote and continue the conversation, so, okay, Councilmember Shribz?
Actually, my recommendation is, the purpose of the ad hoc is to do it not on your own, doing other things, but to be together as a group, working with staff to come up with recommendations to us. I'd say if, if anybody wants to go out and talk to the individuals, collect data from that, do on your own research, on your own. That's not part of the ad hoc, who'd say we're all going to do that.
I think we're all going to do that, but yeah.
Yeah, I said, we all do that on our own to do all that, but at this point, the direction, I think, of what the ad hoc is purpose, what's being stated here, is, is not appropriate for an ad hoc. The ad hoc, to me, would be just sit in a room down and work out our differences of what we think, with staff's help. If, if going out, anyway, I'm sorry, and I don't recommend that at this time. I think we should trust staff to move forward at this point and come back with recommendations. I don't think we need the ad hoc.
I'm, I'm, I'm losing this meeting here. The, there's, we're not coming to a conclusion here, we're kind of going circles a little bit. I don't believe that's what's on the table at the moment. I think Councilmember Barnacle wants the ad hoc to be an educational group for the community.
Just to collect data.
No, an educational group, outreach group for the community.
Yeah.
But to bring it back to us.
Yes, of the community data. But I think the, the clear intention is to communicate to the public and advocate for, educate and advocate.
Specifically to the downtown business community. Like, that's the, that's the area where, like, there's no way that this moves forward in my mind. Like, I certainly wouldn't support it without the support of the downtown business community, right? And I don't want to have the downtown business community showing up here when we're voting on it. I want to go out and talk to them, and it's a pretty simple mission.
Mr. Mayor, council, if I'm understanding Councilmember Barnacle correctly, it's not so much a data gathering exercise as it is an attempt to have conversations with key downtown business stakeholder groups to see if there's a scenario in which some version of, some forms of, some instances of paid parking would, would gain their support. Am I wrong in that, Councilmember?
Yeah, I think we all, I think, I think I understand that, yes.
So that's a pretty targeted outreach, information gathering, that's something that staff would be able to assist with. That's not something that would result in, in decisions, because the decisions have to be made here in this setting. It's something that could inform decisions. It's something that some of you may not want to see proceed, but that's, that's what I think's being proposed. And we, you know, what's agendized for tonight-
Yes.
Is action on a proposed plan that has been described, has been referred to as something that's better described as a menu that could lead to a plan. And, and we're in this in-between step of these, these options have been identified, but not the how. And, and this is one way to try to get at-
I think, I think the paid parking is separated from where we're going with tonight's plan. I think, I think we're now talking about two different tracks. So I think you have a clear in mind what you're looking for in the ad hoc. And first, let me see, a show of hands, who thinks the ad hoc should occur? Can I see a show of hands who supports the ad hoc? So there are five votes, oh, four votes, four votes, thank you. So there's four votes for the ad hoc, which carries, I mean, and so we have now four volunteers for that ad hoc. And do any of the four volunteers wish to not participate in it as described? No? Then I'd like to see the clerk, have you, have you got a voting process in mind? We can ask each person three names, which is probably the easiest, right?
Yeah, so we can go through each person and have them list the three people they'd like.
Thank you.
And see if we can find consensus there.
That's, that's, that's what we're doing here. And, and it's within our right to assign an ad hoc tonight.
Yeah.
Because it's not, it's not been notified that we're doing this body.
I'm, what? I'm adding B3, which is, B3, like, my proposal here would be to add B3, which is to form a council ad hoc to talk to downtown business owners about paid parking. Like, that's the, that's what I'm suggesting as an action item coming out of this.
It's an amendment to an existing document being-
Okay.
Seems like a pretty clean amendment.
Pretty tricky area, right?
We're straying, so, but, you know, but it, but it's not something that's gonna lead to action away from the public, it's gonna lead to further dialogue and information to come back for decision, so, you know. And it's certainly germane to this topic, I don't know that any of us saw that coming, but obviously it relates to a possible-
Amendments to documents are permissible.
Yeah.
I think we're at the clerk, and would you do a roll call, name of a-
Okay. Barnacle?
Barnacle, Kater Thompson, Quint.
Kater Thompson?
Barnacle, Kater Thompson, and Quint.
DeCarly, Barnacle, and Quint.
Barnacle, Kater Thompson, DeCarly.
Quint? Okay.
Barnacle, DeCarly, and Quint.
Barnacle, Kater Thompson, and Quint.
Okay.
So that moves us through, thank you very much. Are you gonna go ahead and announce that?
Yes, there were four people who supported Barnacle, Kater Thompson, and Quint.
Okay, so that sets that up. I'll leave it to staff to sort out what an ad hoc means and how that process of convening happens. So we have a B3 here on our document, which I'm holding, hoping at end of conversation, we say is direction to staff. So we're on C, please. And, and anyone commentary on this one?
My, my commentary would be that I'm for accelerating C1 and deferring C2. Strong support of C3. Maybe retiring C4.
I'm a big fan of C4 as well. Anybody going once?
I don't like C2. I don't, I, I think that's gonna take a lot of management, and I, I, you know, I, I think a lot of the discussion tonight is looked at employees as if they're a plague, but they're actually a vital part of businesses. You know, people couldn't open their doors if there weren't people to open them in town. And so I, I don't think we should be pushing employees out elsewhere, creating permits for them. You know, I, I don't think we should be doing that.
And Councilmember Shrips?
On, well, ICC2 is, since we already know the hotel has already offered to take the Theater Square and rent, lease some space and use that, we should rent some space up there in the theater and allow employee permit parking there. So if that's a program designated not current, moving over-
Creative, creative idea. Let's let the staff come in a second.
And we don't have funding for that, so I just, yeah.
Well, and then too, that would be, I mean, the permits would cost either the employee or the business owner something, right? You wouldn't want to put that on them.
So let's take the directions to staff to flesh out that item before taking action for us. I know you have two paragraphs.
C2, flesh out, okay.
Okay.
And, and really with that, you know, with Theater Square, our assumption right now is that Theater Square area employees are parking in the Theater Square garage. That is a very convenient, long-term parking option that is available to them. We think the issue is probably much greater over on the, in, in other areas of the downtown. That being said, happy to, sounds like the, the direction is to, to bring back a little bit more information on C2 prior to implementation.
Right, a program like that would require council authorization anyways.
I just got a quick question on that, because I was thinking about this as I was reading, that like, on the outer areas, if employer had permits for their employees, then they wouldn't get a ticket. They'd have like an eight-hour permit, or whatever, or a four-hour permit. And so they're actually, it, one permit per year is less than a ticket. What was your ticket? How much?
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollar ticket, so we were talking, what, twenty-eight dollars? And we were, or twenty-six, whatever our number was, was the lowest. And so, I mean, it's, I mean, it's, it's not much money considering how much a ticket would cost.
Given all of the complexities associated with a, a employee permit program, totally happy to, to-
Flesh it out.
Bring back some more specifics prior to implementation.
Thank you. We're on D. I'm sorry, Councilmember now.
I just, the email on the A Street lot, the writer mentioned she would be willing to pay more. I think she said it has not gone up in-
Two thousand eight.
Yeah, and so she's been, she's had it that long, and the, you know, I-
I think we trust staff to digress on some of these issues.
I think we need to communicate and have a conversation with those permit holders. On C3, how many of those streets are also residential neighborhoods? So-
Those are generally, they're either residential or a mix of residential and professional, so think like those, kind of the professional offices that you see on Keller Street, a lot of law offices, accountants, things like that.
So I think we have to, it's on a, it's on a address-by-address basis, and I'm not thrilled with the C2, the employee permit program. We don't have, I mean, it would take more staff time, and I don't think we have that.
This would be a discussion also with the parking, is, you know, we can talk about the value of a permit, so somebody's not gonna have to pay a fifty-dollar ticket.
Yeah, and, and my, my hope is that whatever staff comes up with is vetted by Downtown Business Association and other stakeholders, and the council doesn't have to look into each of these conditional efforts. So. And my other worry is that Bjorn's like the critical resource for so many projects, and we kind of make him-
And he only has so much time, so the time we spend with ad hocs and a variety of other things, he is one individual, just stuff like that.
I just have one other comment. I mean, when somebody is down at La Villa Apartments, I believe they pay for parking, and then they pay for an extra parking space if they want. I'd be curious how much they're paying, because on the A Street parking, twenty-eight dollars or twenty-six dollars a year to have a parking place 24/7 is not-
Ask staff to bring that into line with modern realities.
Yeah, and that was part of our exercise here. We did look at fees, existing fees and fees in neighboring cities, so we're ready to, to make recommendations on those updates. I think that generally occurs when the fee schedule comes to council, so.
Can we go to D?
So the only change there was bringing back C2, it sounded like, was what I, kind of the consensus I heard there. And then C5.
I think we're all big fans of that.
That's coming.
What was C5?
C5 was Keller Street-
Do better at the Keller Street garage.
Keller Street upgrades.
D4 I have concerns about, because, you know, if, if we're forcing delivery trucks to shift tonight, you know, how does the delivery company do that with, with their routing and the logistics and, and their own supply chain? How does the business do that if they don't have evening or early morning hours? They have to then staff, have staff down there to have the doors open.
I think consider is the right word in that terminology there, but good feedback since we're providing direction. And for me here, E2, I mean, I would like to strike out the Pedalum Boulevard North till every other item above it has been sorted thoroughly.
Yeah, I, I'd like to, it's not there, but it's been discussed, Strike Liberty Street, because PEF is over there with, with their nonprofit. Again, they provide hundreds of thousands of dollars to our school system every year, and they're very concerned about the access point to their drop-off location for their thrift store. And, you know, I, I don't think that street is so heavily impacted, it needs to become a one-way street. I know there's been safety concerns about it.
Let me make a suggestion for us. We have the Howard Street Parking, the Howard Street Project, including this street, coming to us. Let's pick it up at, at that time.
It's the direction.
But let's pick it up at that time, for the, rather than have a conversation.
I'll just, I'll just make a, a suggestion here, just to kind of capture what you're both saying, is that we just take out specific references and, and add some language referencing the fact that we will be doing further analysis and engagement prior to implementation. Does that sound good? So that we're not deciding which streets are getting what-
Discussion with downtown business. We pretty comfortable here? All right. Thank you much, very, very much, like we noticed, that's, it's a really tough thing, and, and it's got a lot of loose ends, so I appreciate all the work that you've done on it. And we've concluded that item, and we're adjourning tonight in memory of Helene Barless. Thank you very much. Good night.